We're down one person this evening. Councilman Mayor Boehner said that he wasn't going to be able to make it. The first item, we have two items tonight. The first item is Civic Center Workshop. And I'll toss that over to you, Jim, and take it.
Thank you, sir. You all had the history, the very brief history on this, on your agenda, so I won't go back into it. And Mr. Newman's going to do some review of the history of this particular project. And so, to get it kicked off, Mr. Kerry Newman with SFS Architecture will be making the presentation tonight. And I leave it to you, Kerry.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Great to see everybody here tonight. We're excited to be here to start this next stage of the process, the programming and concept design stage. So, tonight is that first workshop to start that off. And I want to kind of make some introductions first, before we get into the agenda. But with me is Steve Blackburn with BRS Architecture. Steve and BRS and SFS, my firm, have been working together on numerous projects for 15 years or so. And we're working on a couple of projects with him right now, so, including this project. So, and then I also meant to bring our, now that we're in this stage of programming and concept design, I meant to bring my project manager as well, but his wife decided to have their baby this afternoon, so he has a pretty good excuse. So, but you'll meet him at the next workshop. So, tonight, we want to take just a couple minutes and talk about just a quick summary of the citizen survey that was done and the market analysis. And we're not going to dwell on that tonight, but we thought it was worth just revisiting that and just kind of summarizing those results quickly. We want to work with you tonight to develop a mission statement. We'll do that. And then, really, the majority of our meeting tonight is going to be our programming exercise and developing a budget for the project. So, we have a fun exercise that we've done in the past, and Steve will be leading you through that process. And then finally, we'll talk about what the next steps are, what we'll be doing after this workshop. And then, I thought I'd just summarize for you, now that we've gotten through the citizen survey and the market analysis, just to summarize the team for you. SFS Architecture, of course, here. You met Steve with BRS Architecture. You met Jeff, Darren Barr and Jeff King with Ballard King. They did the market analysis. And then, you've met Ron Vine with ETC at the bottom there. And then, if we were to go into the next step, which is the site, more site-specific site-selection process, Confluence is our landscape architect that would be working on that piece if you decide to go that next step. So, just wanted to summarize the citizen survey, market analysis piece for you tonight. If you remember, we had a goal of completing 300 surveys and really had a very, very good response from your citizens and received 581 surveys. And those have a 95% level of confidence in their responses. And then, just to summarize some of the highlights, these were the features that the citizens were most likely to support. Indoor running and walking track was very high, 63%. Some kind of a weight cardiovascular area was second, at 42%. Some aerobics fitness space was third, at 36%. Multipurpose court was 14%. And then, meeting and conference areas was high on the list as well, with a kitchen. Multipurpose space for programming areas was also fairly high. So, those were kind of the highest-ranked features that were reported in the survey. And then, how often respondents indicated they would visit the new civic center. 48% several times a week, 17% once a week. So, there was a pretty good response on how often people would visit some kind of a new civic center. And then, level of support for charging user fees. You know, renting a room with kitchen was very high on the list. I know that's something that the council is very interested in. Participating in exercise classes was also high. Cardiovascular areas. Participating in adults, adult sports and youth sports were also high. Theater performance was high, at 41%. And renting a room for community meetings, those were all very high on the list. Fees and costs, how to handle the cost of operating a new civic center. 37% said taxes should pay for the majority, and 38% said user fees should pay the majority. So, there was kind of a split between those two. And then, level of support to vote for a property tax bond. And this was specifically saying that in doing that, it would not, it would prevent a tax bill from decreasing, but it wasn't an additional, an additional cost. And 39% were very supportive, 28 somewhat supportive. And then, how they would, how citizens would vote. 52% said they would vote in favor, 23% said might vote in favor. So, that was just kind of the highlights of the citizen survey. Just to summarize the market analysis, we had the two different market areas. The one on the left is the city. That was the primary service area. And then, on the right was the secondary service area that was a five-minute kind of radius outside the city, and then extending a little bit further to the south. And just some of the things that were, that kind of jumped out at us. This is the recreation spending potential, comparing Raymore and the secondary service area to a national, a national average, which is 100. And for all of these things, participant sports, recreation lessons, social recreation club membership, all those, Raymore and the secondary service area ranks very high as compared to the national level. So, we thought that was a, that was a good, a good sign. This chart really kind of shows age distribution as compared to the national average, and they're very, very similar to the national average, so that they kind of mirror nationally what we see as far as different age groups go. And then, participation, again, these are some of the activities. And what this shows is the increase in activities from 2003 to 2012. And just some of the ones that really kind of jumped out to us as very high increases over that nine-year period. The aerobic activities, exercise walking was big, running, jogging was high, yoga extremely high. So, those were just kind of interesting to see those increases. And then, probably one of the biggest concerns that I think we had, and I know that the city council had concerns, was the alternative service providers. And this really shows your market area and then shows the different community centers that are located nearby, so that, you know, the Belton facility is right there, Grandview is close by, Lee Summit is close, Harrisonville. So, there were several different community centers that were very close to the service area, and I think that was one of the major concerns that you have as a council. There were some service providers that are local, more local fitness providers that are within the service area as well. So, that's just a quick summary of those two pieces of the process moving forward. One of the main things we'd like to do and to kind of start the process is to ask a question of you and, and get your feedback. We'd like to hear from each of you. And it doesn't have to be a long explanation, but in a quick few words or a few sentences, kind of what you think, what is the greatest value a new civic center can bring the residents of Raymore? And this really helps us to kind of understand where each of you are coming from when we're starting, starting a programming process like this. So, if we could just kind of go around the table and kind of throw out your ideas on what you think the greatest value a new civic center will bring. And Steve's going to be making copious notes over there.
Who would like to go first? Steve?
I think the very brief phrase, bringing people together.
Next? Don't all go at once. Kevin, did you want to go next?
Absolutely. Multipurpose room comes to mind.
Ryan?
I like another meeting space venue.
I think the convention center, I think that what we need is something that can bring people into Raymore.
I think a space where people can go in town to do a variety of different activities and gather as groups.
Charlie?
I agree. I think a place where people can get together both for scheduled meetings or scheduled activities, and also an opportunity for people to get together and just hang out and talk and kind of a sense of community. We don't have a town square or anything, you know, where people can just gather, more of a gathering place.
Charlene, did you want to comment?
I'm not sure how we got from a community room to a civic center. And I'm not sure if we can't provide for people to have transportation for basic needs, then why are we concerning ourselves with recreation right now? I think our priorities are obscured.
Okay. Other comments? I think everybody had a chance, but Steve?
All right. Great. Thank you. That really helps us understand where you're all coming from.
My comments were up here.
So, with that, we'd like to go ahead and move into our programming and budget exercises. And I'll hand this over to Steve. We're going to, he'll run through the methodology that this is, and this is a process that we've used numerous times, and I think it's a great exercise.
Thank you, Kerry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Blackburn. I'm one of the partners at Barker Rinker CCAT Architecture. A couple of you don't have my card. And we're delighted to be here in Raymore. What I'm going to do in the following slides is take you through these four items to review. First, we're going to talk about what's the difference between a project budget and a construction budget. Charlene, can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? All right. Then I'm going to take you through our estimating methodology. How do we determine what a project would cost in the future here in Raymore? Not what it's going to cost last year or tomorrow, but what will it cost in the future? Then I'm going to take you on a virtual tour of similar facilities and features that your residents said were important to them in the survey. And then, we're going to play a little game, and it's called the BRS Program Card Game. And that'll be really fun. It'll take about a half hour to play that game. And what we're going to do is identify the priorities of the council based on what the residents have told you in that statistically valid survey. So, we start with a priority or prioritized wish list. And they may contain facilities that your residents said were important to them. And you can see on the right-hand side there, they can include multipurpose rooms and playgrounds for children and fitness areas and indoor tracks and those kinds of things. And what we've done is created this card deck that I'm holding. And this card deck contains a bunch of different rooms we've put in our community civic centers across the nation. And what we've done is estimated how much these rooms would cost here in Raymore in the future. And here's how the methodology works. First, we have to determine what the schedule of a potential project could be. What we've looked at here is our feasibility study being complete in the spring of 2015. It takes about a year from that point for the design start to the design completion and bidding process. So, if we said, what is the first possible month that construction could start? We've estimated that that would be in mid-2016. Based on other community civic centers around the country and how long they take to build, we assumed a 14-month construction process. So, the midpoint of construction, we believe, and this is our assumption right now for these costs, is January 2017 is when a contractor potentially could have bought out this project with his sub-trades. So, why is that important? It's important for us to estimate inflation. Inflation right now is running about eight tenths of 1% per month in this market. And so, we took that 8% and we identified for 2014, we assumed an 8% inflation factor also for next year, and then for years after that, we are estimating it would fall to 7%. We build community civic centers all around the nation, and so we have a vast database of how much these rooms cost to build. And what we've done is we've adjusted that to the Kansas City and Missouri market. And what that tells us is we bring all those costs around the nation back to our Denver headquarters, and then we translate them to Kansas City. And so, what we know from Means Estimating Guide is that it's 11% more expensive to build in Kansas City than it is on our database. So, we modify the cost, the actual cost of construction, and then advance that 11% to translate it to the Raymore market. And then, we add these inflationary factors for the future of construction, and that modifies the 111% to 127%. I'm sorry, the inflation, 127 are these numbers. And the inflation plus the location modifier is 142%. So, what does that really mean for you? Well, here's our historic database. It's all in Denver prices and how much it costs for all the different parts of construction, from pouring concrete to adding, masonry is always a pretty big cost of building a civic building, to the thermal and moisture protection windows, roofs, and things like that. And this is the 111% factor that I talked about. So, what that tells us, if our estimated Denver value-cost densities in January of this year were these numbers, it would translate in the future to the Kansas City midpoint construction market to these numbers. So, as an example, rooms that your residents are interested in, like the community gathering rooms, would be about $313 per square foot. Weights and fitness areas would be about $299. And amphitheater shelter would be about $285. So, this is all assumptions and the math that goes into creating these cards. So, let me take you on a little visual tour of potential spaces within the Raymore Civic Center. So, we call these space types. So, the first one I'm going to start with is food service. Now, many of our civic centers, at their very basis, have some kind of vending to create beverage and food service. The question for the council tonight is, do you want to advance into something that is, has a service component to it, meaning it would have a staff member that served food? So, that would be like these cafe operations you see here. They're usually proximate to the lobby. They're an amenity for your guests that are coming to the civic center. Usually, the seating is in the lounge portion of the civic center. It's kind of a concession operation, and then it has a storage component that goes with it. Another thing I would like to point out on these slides, as well as the cards, you'll see this revenue and expense graph. And that's really just an indicator of how much it costs to run a room like this and what are the potential revenue flows. So, in this particular case, our history tells us that it's more expensive to run a cafe in a civic center than you would actually bring in to cover its cost. So, this is a loser on the bottom line in operations. So, keep an eye on that bottom right corner as I go through these. And you can see the types of spaces that make more money than it costs to operate typically, and ones that would be a subsidy for the city of Raymore. Now, here's one, if you go straight to that bottom corner, that shows a low expense ratio and a high potential revenue. Why is that? Well, a health wellness center that would be a potential partnership with a health provider, a hospital in the area, could actually bring in more money to the city than it costs to run. So, this would be an area for fitness and wellness testing. It might have exam rooms, mass therapy rooms, nutritionists. Maybe you would run annual or monthly vaccination programs in that space. And it's usually a rented space. So, these photographs that you're seeing here are Cuyahoga Falls, Ohio, and that is Suma Health Systems. They rent that space. It's about 4,000 square feet of the civic center. The next one, I want to talk about children, so different demographics that we're going to encounter. What I read from that population demographics that Kerry showed earlier, while you're very much in line with America, you are a younger population. You have more of a younger demographic here in Raymore that you may need to focus more heavily on child watch babysitting, again, depending on what is, what other rooms might be in your civic center. This is not daycare. This is short-term babysitting. It's a convenience for the parents that are maybe using the workout areas or going to meetings or other functions within the center. And it's geared towards five and under. The expense-revenue graph is kind of a wash. This is really a customer service area for your, your user base. This is an indoor playground, and this is geared towards children under seven years old. The previous slide of babysitting, I would say, is an absolute staple to a civic center. The indoor playground is more of an à la carte kind of space. It would be a popular space, I believe, in Raymore to have an imaginative play kind of area like this. The two examples that I'm showing here are Brumfield, Colorado, and this is, this one is themed towards the mountains of Colorado. And so, the play structure, this is an area that the kids come up and climb into, and there's a slide down into a soft area. And this is Cuyahoga Falls, Ohio, again. This is a 28-foot climbing tree. It's really kind of the adventure tree that they can climb up into and see other parts of the building, the jogging track and fitness area, and then they can slide down back into the lobby. And it really provides that imaginative play and physical and mental activities. The reason that we show an advanced revenue stream for this kind of space is that it promotes membership of the civic center. So, if there are places for parents to bring their children, the parents are more apt to buy that monthly pass or that annual membership. The next demographic I want to talk about are teens. When I talk about teens, I really talk about 11 to 15-year-olds. The reason I talk about 11 to 15-year-olds is because as soon as our kids turn 16, they don't want to come to the civic center. They get their driver's license. Well, you all remember when you were 16. And once you get that freedom of your car, you're out doing other things. So, 11 to 15-year-old is the target for this. This could be traditional games, like you see in the picture here with foosball and billiards and ping pong, but it also could be extreme fitness games like you're seeing here. They're on a balancing board and playing a video game while they're moving their body. These guys here in the triangle space are jumping from one point of the triangle to the other, hitting a colored pad. And so, they're playing a game, and yet they're being active. There's often music and bending and study areas also associated with this kind of space. On the expense-revenue graph, there's, there's very little revenue that comes in to provide an area like this. The expense, of course, is also low, but it will certainly be more than you bring in for taking care of your teens. We heard through the survey, as well as the value question, as you went around the table, that classrooms and meeting spaces are a big deal here in Raymore. So, providing spaces like this for classes and meetings and special functions and small conferences, and even an overflow to the main community room is a really good idea. The expenses are generally low for a space like this, and revenue could be, I would say, medium based on the fee structure the council decides to charge. You might charge, as an example, some of your corporate folks here in Raymore to use the center on an hourly or half-day basis. Arts and crafts rooms are often popular in civic centers. The expense here, of course, is low, and revenue based on fees you would charge for classes could be in the medium. An arts and crafts room could also serve as a stage to a community room. And so, if you plan to have some community gatherings, like dinner theater with kids' programming on the stage, you could actually use a space like this, put all the tables away and elevate that 18 to 24 inches above the community room, open up a wall and use it as a stage. We've done that successfully around the country. And then, there are the Community Events Hall. And this is the main hall that we would like to know from you, what would be the appropriate capacity of this community room? On the cards that I'm going to share with you here in a moment, we have three cards for Community Events Halls. One is a 160-person capacity. The next one is a 240-room capacity. And then, the last one is a 300-person capacity. And as you might imagine, the 300 is more expensive. Yes, sir? Sure. So, this, this photograph here is about 250-capacity. This one's 300. It's a little bit further back in this picture, but it's actually a bigger space than this one. And this one, I think, is probably in the 160. Now, in association, yes, sir?
The picture at the top right, is that a picture of the event space and then that other room opened up?
That's correct. So, the elevated stage I was talking about is here. So, through a curtain and a movable wall that could open up to, say, the arts and crafts room makes a good elevated stage space. In association with this space is food service, and it's a different kind of food service than that first cafe I talked about. Generally, I would say 80% of our community rooms are served by caterers' kitchens, and that's shown right here. And you can see there's not a whole lot of cooking equipment there. There's a whole lot of horizontal surface that the caterer brings the truck right up to that door, brings in the hot food, keeps it warm, serves the food, brings their own crockery, all the silverware and all of that. After the food is served, they bring the dishes and crockery and excess food back into this room. They clean it up, put it all in their truck, and they actually take all the excess back to their catering shop. And so, that's called a catering and warming kitchen. And that differs from a commercial kitchen. And I've got a card for each one, so you can see the cost difference. A commercial kitchen is where you're actually preparing the food right on sight. We threw in a couple of images here of gymnasiums. This one is called a MAC Gym. MAC stands for Multi-Activity Court. The reason it's called that is it has the ability to do more than just what a normal gymnasium does. You can see that we often use a synthetic surface for this. So, you might imagine a little bringing in a bounce house for, you know, a community event where the kids can come and run around and... and run around and, and play in those kinds of environments. You can lay down a sport court, like in this one here in Livonia, Michigan, where it can take the point loading of rollerblades. Yes. Right. So when I heard the, the potential of a convention or a trade show, this would be a perfect kind of space to have, to set up those kinds of trades. And then the upper right-hand corner here is a more traditional gym with a wood court. So this is basketball, volleyball, badminton, pickleball. And then an elevated walk-jog track, which is your number-one thing that the residents of Raymore said that they would be interested in. So this is for walking, jogging, views to the other activities. You can see this one in Livonia kind of crosses a bridge over the fitness center. This one in Broomfield comes out of the gym and around into the lobby. There's a climbing wall structure there and around gymnastics. The expense-revenue on a walk-jog track, as you might imagine, is low. It's also the cheapest thing you can build in a building, because you're building two, two-story space anyway. To hang a track in it is quite inexpensive. Another component we heard from Raymore residents was the idea of a weight room or cardiovascular equipment area. Sometimes we just call this the fitness center. And it's really four major components. It's cardiovascular training equipment, and that would be like these treadmills and elliptipars and that kind of thing. These are cardio. The next one is circuit resistance equipment, like plate-loaded, I mean, selectorized, so, you know, like a Nautilus machine where you'd go up and select 70 pounds with a pin. The other one is, is free weights, which this gentleman right here is using free weights. And then a stretching area for this. The expense-revenue is quite evident, why this is such a popular thing. So many residents want to use a space like this that the expense is kind of medium and the revenue potential is high. I also wanted to talk about specialized fitness space. And we just, Carrie and I just finished a project in Olathe that has one of these types of spaces where, you know, people are, are busy and they can't necessarily come to a class when the class is going. So we've been creating these spaces around the nation where people can, can go up to a kiosk like here on the right-hand side and pull up their favorite instructor from wherever in the world they would like to, and then they can run their 50-minute class with either individually or with their spouse or with a small group like this. CRX Training is also falls into the specialized fitness category. Aerobics, Fitness and Dance, Carrie pointed that out, has grown, I think, 75% over the past nine years in popularity. And so this is group fitness classes like aerobics, both youth programs and adult programs. And we need a specialized space for that kind of thing. Its expense-revenue is also in favor of a non-subsidy operation. So I think your residents are interested in a space like this, and this looks like it's good for your bottom line operationally as well. A similar expense-revenue graph on a spinning or cycling studio space. This is where groups from, say, 15 to 35, people would get in a class and through about a 45-minute session would follow their instructor through a specialized training. Usually it, it uses a projector system where they can cycle mountains from around the world and have that visualization as well. Next, I want to talk about performing arts centers. It appears that that's kind of a, a medium interest in, in Raymore residents. And so we have cards tonight that go from capacities of 300, which is like the space on the right, to 400, which is like the space on the left, to 500 and the associated cost for that. And these cards contain all the things associated with that performing arts center. Theater, lobby lounge, audience seating, the box office administration, performance area, which is the stage, lighting and sound booths and storage. And that brings me to an outdoor space that would be similar. This would be seasonal, of course, here in Raymore. This would be outdoor built-in seating adjacent to the building typically. This would be for movies and concerts and special events and a real great draw right here in, in your own city. And these show some examples from around the country where we did just that. As an example, the big picture here, this is the community hall and the outdoor patio associated with that. This is the amphitheater stage and shelter, and it backs up to the indoor stage of their performing arts center. And then we'd like other suggestions, other things that you've heard as you've been talking to your constituents in Raymore. So with that, I would like to, to know if there are indoor spaces or outdoor spaces that you've heard that would be of interest for this project. And then we will play the card game.
Council members? I was going to say, I think you covered everything plus three or four more.
And more probably than you thought. Okay. Well, Carrie and I are going to come to the table, and I'll just sit here up here at the front. Oh, yeah, the middle would be great. Okay, this is how the program card game goes. So in my hands are a deck of cards, and you can see they have photographs on the back of them. We can pass these around as we talk about them. What we're going to do is go through each one of them, talk about the salient points of each one. We're going to create a yes pile, or we're going to create a no pile. And for those that can't decide, we're going to create a maybe pile in the middle. So what normally happens, not to say that Raymore is going to be the same as 200 other cities, but what, what typically happens is it's very evident what the yeses are because you've been talking to your constituents within the community. It's also going to be very evident what we, we don't care for here. It might be on the lower scale of some of those survey results, right, that your residents said, you know, we're not interested in climbing walls. In fact, I think we took the climbing wall out of the deck, so we didn't even have to talk about such things. And then there's going to be the maybe pile, usually is something like this. We would really like a 300-person community room to gather as many people as we can in the community. If we can't afford that, maybe we would go to a 240. So that's how the maybe pile usually works. So I always like to get started by telling you what you have to have. You're going to need administrative spaces. You're going to need staff spaces to run a civic center. Is that true? Yes. So I'm going to start your, your yes pile with a couple of cards. One is the administrative spaces, and the other is you're going to need a lobby, a lounge, possibly locker rooms if we have fitness kind of components and that kind of thing. So that's required building support spaces. Now, this is a big number at $3 million. However, it's based on a pretty big building, and we're going to be able to whittle this down based on the other yeses that you say. But I'm going to suggest to you that required building support spaces, you can't really run a building without all of these spaces. First aid rooms and general storage and maintenance and custodial closets and restrooms. Would we all say that that's, that's a required thing? All right. So now I'm going to run through some cards of things that I just talked about. So what did you think about the idea of having, you're going to have vending, and it's, it's in this card that I just talked about. But what about a cafe juice bar? Do you, do you, okay, I see a thumbs. This is a great way to vote, too. How many thumbs ups and downs do we have? Go ahead, council. Okay?
Can, can, can we remember to use the mics because there are people at home that are probably listening also?
Like you said, to me, it depends, because if you do have convention space, you're going to want to have some kind of vending of some sort, which you can rent that out to vendors.
Sure.
So I don't know if that has to be a cafeteria that runs all the time.
Derek, did you have a comment?
I would agree with Councilman Stevens' comments. That's one, to me, kind of later in the game, depending upon what else we pick, was whether we need that for a support mechanism.
When I go up to High Blue Wellness, I see a large contingent of kind of the walking crowd, and they, the biggest place they gather is where the, the area where they can have some coffee or things like that. So to me, it can, I mean, I, I, I'm fluctuating on the size of the demand, but the general nature of the income concentration.
Sure. Other comments?
I don't know if you guys have been to the big church in Raytown that has the fitness center? They've got a, quite an elaborate cafe area, and I know it's a great gathering place for people. And I'm not saying we need like an elaborate place that serves huge meals or anything, but I think even just a coffee shop, juice bar kind of thing would help attract people. And also maybe as part of that provide some of that gathering space for people who just want to sit and talk.
Goes to that social value that someone brought up.
Yeah, I, I think what Councilmember Morehead was talking about, comparing it to the High Blue Wellness, is actually addressed in that first or second card, where you said that there would be the lobby and the congregating space. That is, that is more closely tied to what the High Blue Wellness has. This is actually something, correct me if I'm wrong, actually requires staff members to staff it, was low revenue and high expense. Was that correct?
That is correct. So your lobby and lounge is in this card, you very selected, and this is a staffed cafe juice bar in addition to, say, a vending.
Well, but one of the biggest demands at High Blue Wellness is what Councilmember Abdelgawat was bringing up. They, they need to expand that beyond what they have. They want more of this. That's some of the feedback I caught from that at least.
Thank you. I'm not up-down, I'm kind of sideways. When I see this, I, I see an opportunity possibly for a contractor to come in and possibly bid that out as a concessionaire. Is that what you're talking about down there, Steve? You know, I, I see value there, but when I, when I see that it's high expense and low revenue, it's going to be subsidized.
Yep.
I, I definitely say no. But I, I think there's an opportunity for a contractor to come in and say, hey, we, we can do this.
I would say you're definitely in the maybe camp. How's that sound? Let's move on. The next one is a hospital wellness center, and this is the one that I talked about that could be a tenant space to a health provider, and I'm not sure what health provider that might be here in Raymore, but, mm-hmm. Any comments on this one?
I was going to say, I, I like the idea of it, to be able to provide that, that room. You know, we have, the University of Missouri Extension actually has programs that, that would be able to utilize that space as well as, you know, some of the other offerings that we have, whether it's the dentistry that we have or the, the medical that we even offer to some of the constituents. So I, I think it's a good space.
For me, I, I think it, I'm seeing it as vendor-dependent. I mean, it, it kind of goes back to who's going to come in. I'd hate for us to put this space in, have no vendors that want to come in, and I think we would need to take a second step to determine who would want to come in. So for me, I'm kind of a maybe because it's depending on other variables.
I think it's another thing, we have a lot of competition in our, our area because we have CVS, Walgreens, and another place where you can get those kinds of services.
Okay. Well, I can tell you that it's normally a maybe for most municipalities because it all hinges on a potential partnership. And so it's a discussion that really has to happen later with potential partners. Is that reasonable? Okay. The next one has to do specifically with the senior demographic. And I didn't talk a lot about the senior demographic, but these are spaces that show a senior adult lounge and a senior wellness center. And I can tell you that for communities that have a much more mature demographic than Raymore does, this is a big, big deal. Now, it might be a big, big deal in Raymore in the next 20 years as, you know, the America, America grays and so will Raymore. What my question for you tonight is, do you want dedicated space for seniors for social activities as well as wellness activities?
I mean, it's just I'm getting all no.
Yes.
I feel like, I feel like multi-use space can be used for seniors, and I don't feel like we need a designated space for that just because the times, I mean, if you watch at the fitness center, the times when people come in, the ages really change based on the time, based on lifestyle and such. So in my opinion, I don't feel like we need a designated space for that. I think that a multi-use space would, would service our community just fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and to kind of play on that, because I sense that, too. It kind of, different groups use it at different times. I like the lounge concept because we obviously want a place to sit and meet and talk like that. I don't know if it has to have the senior component. I mean, it could be just everybody's lounge.
Right, which we already have.
More than, more than just a designated.
Okay. Let's put those in the no category. Now let's talk about a demographic that you do have a lot of, and that is kids. And this is the, specifically the child watch babysitting room. That is specifically for five years and younger, and this is a short-term babysitting. So it'd be staffed with a Raymore, probably Parks and Recreation person, staff member, and for a nominal fee would watch kids up to two hours. And this is a, the customer service kind of amenity. I'm going to put both of these up here. This is the children's indoor playground that we talked about, and this is for seven and under. And this develops large motor skills, provides imaginative play, physical and mental activities, and would be great for birthday parties. We didn't talk a lot about birthday parties, but many civic centers actually are great places to bring kids for their birthday celebrations. So the staple of the center, the child watch is about 344,000, whereas the indoor playground is quite a bit more at 1.4 million.
I would definitely, in my opinion, take the indoor, the playground out. The child watch, I think it's dependent on the other, the other amenities that we end up putting in. So it would be, for me, it's a maybe depending on what else is offered.
I'd have to agree, too. It's, if you're going to provide other things, you're going to be contingent on something like this, you're going to have much more crowd there.
Sure. Maybe we put the, well, other comments.
You got a wave, a big, big wave.
The cast of the indoor playground sounded a little scary, but just considering that it's not something that we have a lot of around here, might be reason enough to at least keep it in the maybe pile. And I agree with Ryan, as far as the other, the babysitting service, if we end up with a fitness, some sort of fitness piece, I think that to get young families there, we're going to need that. But if we don't end up with a fitness piece, then we don't need that.
Kevin?
I'm of the same thinking, you know, the, the sticker shock of the indoor playground, but I don't want to rule it out because I've heard from many people that during their Christmas breaks and when they're in school and stuff like that, mothers and families take their kids out to the mall in Independence to play in the playground there, which is basically that, too. That would be a good opportunity in the inclement weather for the kids to have a place to play. So I guess I would be on a maybe, you know, to investigate it. The, the daycare, I'm, I'm, I agree with everybody else that, you know, it's dependent upon what else we bring in.
All right, one we're going to...
Maybe for both.
Yeah. So we'll come back and revisit the child watch based on the other selections. How about that? I don't forget. This one I didn't talk about, but this is an early learning room, and so this is for structured play and learning for the five and under. So this would actually be appointments that, or classes that are offered for early learning five and under. Okay, we'll put that in the note. Moving along to the teens, or 11 to 15-year-olds as I described them. So this is a games room, and this card represents an 800-square-foot teen game room, ping pong, pool, board games, video games, after-school hangout, 80-foot storage room, and 120-foot...
Before anybody jumps in, I want to make sure everybody is aware that there is one of these now in Peculiar, so that everybody is aware of that.
That's with the Alliance?
Yeah. Yeah.
The one in Peculiar is only open at certain, I mean, like for events, it's not a place where kids can just go anytime. Like, like this would be. So this, while it's similar, wouldn't be exactly the same.
All right, the next three are classrooms. I have a twenty-five person classroom for two hundred thirty-seven thousand. I have a fifty-person classroom for three thirty-nine. And I have an eighty-person classroom, so these are capacity-based for four forty-nine.
Can those be divided up into smaller classrooms, like expandable sort of things?
These typically not. These are standalone rooms, and then I'm gonna get into the, the community rooms that are divisible.
Well, I think a lot of my view on, uh, a, a, a lot of my view on this is, kind of goes back to the, I'm used to like UMKC Student Union where all the major rooms are large multipurpose. They can be broken down into various smaller levels. If I were to go with just a standalone, I'd actually probably lean to the twenty-five just because I know we have a number of groups, small groups that have expressed interest. But most of the groups, I don't think necessarily rise to the level of eighty capacity. Maybe the twenty-five or fifty might be a little more in the Cub Scout group or the, you know, gardening club or various organizations like that.
You know, and I actually see the, the twenty-five person classroom is, if you're actually gonna give specific instruction. You know, most of the courses that I've either seen or taken, you know, that, that are in that venue, you know, you, you're, you're dealing, you know, one-on-one with an instructor. Whereas when you get into the larger space or at the larger groups, you know, that's more of a, you know, they act as a facilitator. And it's more of a, uh, they're giving a speech or they're giving. You don't need that, that close room. So I would be supportive of the twenty-five.
I'm supportive of the twenty-five, but I could also see a need for, maybe in some, some cases, if this would take off, a space for fifty. Uh, but I think a lot of that could be taken care of with a multipurpose room also, if, if we were able to divide that down. But, you know, I'm definitely yes on a twenty-five and a maybe on a fifty.
And first turn on my mic, what's the difference between a classroom and a multipurpose room that could be used as a classroom?
So in this exercise, Mayor, it's, these rooms are standalone rooms without movable walls. Whereas I'm about to get into a series of larger capacity, community events halls that are divisible down into a space like that could handle a fifty-person class. Okay, so this would be representative of a room without movable walls.
Steve, just to get a point of clarification, I asked Kerry, he thinks he knows, but I want to get it cleared up. For some of the earlier things you were presenting, like children's areas, the pricing you give includes equipment. For classroom areas, this would not include desk chairs, IT equipment, et cetera.
Correct. Some of these, for instance, the children's indoor playground where I had one point one million for the space and three hundred thousand for the equipment, I did that because the equipment is so expensive. Whereas these would be handled in, in soft costs to equip the building, which is called FFNA for the tables and chairs and so on. And they're not nearly the sizable equipment. So there's a couple of cards here that I put equipment in because they're so extra, extraordinary. Indoor play is one and fitness is the other. Okay, so just.
Thanks.
A point of clarification, Jim.
I thought you said you were gonna talk about expandable classrooms later, but, you know, my wife, she kind of gets involved with some of this stuff too. And I know even in Park House, they've had more than one thing going on at a time. So I was just thinking that expandable classrooms could handle more than one thing at one time.
Yep. If it's okay, Mayor, I'd like to move on to the expandable. All right, so as I described earlier, I have a one hundred and sixty-person community room events hall at nine hundred eighty thousand. I have a two hundred and forty-person community events hall at one point four million. And I have a three hundred person. So this is all based on, you know, how big of a room do you want? And most of these, I suggest are rooms that are divisible down into three smaller rooms. And obviously the three hundred person capacity has three bigger rooms, right? So let me go through them one by one, starting with the smallest. This is a one hundred person community room events hall. It's twenty-four hundred net square feet for meetings, banquets, and receptions. It seats one hundred and sixty. It can be divided into, I'm suggesting two twelve hundred square foot meeting rooms that would both seat eighty. You could divide it into three that would seat about fifty each. So it'd be like that fifty-person card. And then it has three hundred square feet of storage.
And the information that you're giving is, you don't say anything about what the cost is going to be to, to use those buildings. You're talking about how many people can go inside and how much it's gonna cost, but how, to, to erect it. But how much is it going to cost for the people to use that facility?
Sure. Right. Um, that's not my, uh, purview. That it's gonna be a council decision at some point about how much to rent these facilities for, to the residents and non-residents. You might have non-residents or corporations that want to use the, renting these rooms. But I am showing councilman, uh, councilwoman is the, uh, potential revenue is above the expense. So on these particular cars, if you look at the revenue expense graph, they're all potential moneymakers. So these aren't damaging your bottom line, they're actually.
Or better yet, non-money losers.
Yes, a non-money losers. Right. Does that, is that helpful? Okay. So capacities, uh, so that's the one sixty. The next one is a two hundred and forty-person community room events hall. Five thousand gross square feet, one point four million dollars, thirty-six hundred net square foot room for meetings, banquets, and receptions, seats two hundred and forty. Can be divided into three twelve hundred net square foot meeting rooms with five hundred square feet of storage. A three hundred person community room events hall is sixty-seven hundred gross square feet, one point nine million dollars. Potential high revenue. Uh, six thousand net square feet room for meetings, banquets, and receptions can be divided into four fifteen hundred square foot meeting rooms. And it has twelve hundred square foot of storage for all the various tables, chairs, different configuration. Is there a preference? I, I know this is probably the most important room in this building for the civic center. Is there a preference for the capacity?
Not so much capacity. How much actually would it have, would it be to add, uh, a stage with a good sound system?
Sure.
To each and all these rooms?
The stage that has a potential, I'm gonna suggest is the arts and crafts room that could have a movable table and a multipurpose floor. And that's about four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and fourteen hundred gross square feet. So how would that look if you've thought that these cards were actually floors? This would be a three hundred person community room. And this would be slightly elevated above that room with a movable wall that would have the, uh, actors or musicians or, or whoever on the stage. And then this would be a flat floor, kind of dining hall, if you will, set up usually with eight tops. So round tables with eight chairs around them for a banquet. That's a very popular model.
In comparison, uh, the Memorial Station seats three hundred. So.
The great thing about the arrangement that Steve was just talking about with the, uh, the stage is, you know, the stage may not get used, you know, on a daily basis. So that flexibility of being able to use that as a classroom really increases the usability of that area. So it's a really good way to do it. Gives you lots of flexibility.
This previous card that you chose, the twenty-five person classroom, could also be an elevated stage. It's a little small because it's only six hundred and fifty net square feet for a stage. This might be a nice stage for the small community events hall. So if you had the one sixty, this could actually be your elevated stage. I would suggest to you, as one of your designers, if you chose one of these higher capacity, two forty or three hundred, that you would want a, a larger, uh, elevated stage.
Any preferences in size?
You know, I, I mean, don't get me wrong, I, I really, in using Memorial Station, uh, that is a wonderful area to use. And I think Belton hit a home run with that. And my problem is, is the three times I've been there though, we've never even filled half the room. I just, I tend to fall conservatively on this to believe that we may not have quite that demand. And so, um, you know, I, I, I'm more of a yes to the one sixty, maybe to the two forty, and no on the three hundred.
I like, I like the three hundred. I think if we're gonna build it, we might as well build all we can afford to build. But primarily because Memorial Station, whatever it's called, doesn't leave the opportunity to divide it into smaller rooms. I think this is a great way for us to get a large space, but also be able to divide it into smaller spaces that would be used maybe more often than that large space. We would have a little more versatility, um, with this than I think they have there.
What was the capacity of our community room downstairs?
I think it was one hundred persons.
One hundred, okay, because I was guessing eighty.
But if you put a hundred in there.
It, it's standing room only.
Yeah, it'd look like a scene out of one of the old Star Trek. Shoulder to shoulder.
That's not with tables though, is it? The capacity, what, it was with tables, a hundred capacity?
I would assume that that would allow for tables as well. But we would have some of those joint meetings with the county down there, and those, those are crowded. I, you were elbow to elbow with the tables set up in a U.
I, I would actually concur with Councilmember Delguad and, and go with the three hundred and then the maybe on the, on the two forty. Uh, just from the standpoint, because we can split that up. You know, I just think the opportunity, uh, could present itself to, to use, to utilize it better than.
The reason why I'm saying yes to the three hundred is because we are growing. You know, I, I don't think it'd be a far-stretched imagination that someday we will be more population than Belton. And I think three hundred would be a great thing for us, you know. We may not use it every, every weekend, every week. But if we could have that op, that option, that op, the opportunity there for when we do need it, you know, that, that gets you return back.
What, what's the capacity of Holmes Hall in Foxham Springs? Hundred and forty, I think.
So it sounds like the consensus is definitely one sixty's too small. So I'm gonna put that in the no. Is there a consensus that three hundred goes in the yes and two forty in the maybe? Okay. All right, so let's talk about that elevated stage. Given you have a, you've made a decision about the larger events hall, I'm gonna suggest to you that the elevated stage be larger as well, if that's an interesting model for you. And that would be this card here. Comments?
So are you suggesting pulling the other one out of the pile and putting that one in?
No, I'm not. I think having a twenty-five person classroom is gonna serve you many hours of many days on its own. And it's a very nice compliment to have an events hall with an elevated stage and, like, across the hall to have a small classroom.
A design question. Is it possible that we can design a building in such a way that all the interior walls can be opened up? So you just have one, um, super, you know, sized area?
I would say that that is, uh, a design possibility, but it's not good design practice. No matter how much we spend on premium acoustic movable walls, and you've all been in spaces like this, you're not gonna stop. Let's say, um, let's say that this room is your three hundred person room and it's divided into threes. Let's say you have, for some reason, a loud, I don't know, guitar class happening in this one. And let's say you have a meditation class happening in the, in the adjacent room. Chances are that's not gonna. Yeah, right, right, right. So, um, as your designer, again, we, we recommend having some of these hard-walled, highly acoustic, separated rooms.
I just think, you know, our, one of the things we've talked over and over and over about is meeting space. And the wide variety in the meeting space that we need. We have small clubs that are looking for meeting spaces. We have larger groups like Boy Scouts looking for meeting spaces. And we also have people who, over and over, say they want to see a place where they can have wedding receptions. So that bigger thing. And then something, kind of somewhere in the middle, maybe the bridal showers, the baby showers, you know, birthday parties. So I think our best bet is to provide as much variety as we can, to have the big space that can be divided into three smaller spaces, to also have that smaller classroom that we can use for our fitness classes, possibly the arts and craft room that would provide another meeting space slightly larger than the twenty-five person classroom, but not as large as a section of the big meeting hall. So I think there's value there.
Do these dividers look like that, the typical hotel accordion type curtains?
Oh, no.
No, would it be interesting to see.
These are four-foot sections that are actually pretty high STC rated. And, uh, they, they fold against each other, you know, and big panels, more like a convention center. I would warn the city not to do accordion type.
From the standpoint of, of the additional classroom, uh, or even one of these other spots, when we lost the community room, one of the things that, that we lost was the ability for internal, uh, professional development opportunities. I, I was just talking with the chief, you know, they are constantly in trainings, constantly using this room where this space would be valuable for us internally from the, from the city employee standpoint as well. Just a point.
Okay, and if I may, to talk about this elevated stage, either one of these rooms could be a decent elevated stage. This one's actually a wet classroom, a wet, you know, clay, painting, other wet crafts. This one's a dry arts and crafts room, sewing, quilt making, scrapbooking, that kind of thing. Uh, they're about the same cost. They're four hundred and thirty-seven thousand on this one and four hundred and fifty-nine thousand on this one. This one seats forty-five people. They both seat forty-five people. And, uh, had a little bit different storage requirements, so, um. If we're gonna have an elevated stage, I would use one of these two cards. However, the question is, do you want to throw pots? Do you want to kiln? Or are you, are you thinking something that's a little more easier to manage, which is the dry? Dry? Okay. So what I'm gonna do is put the, the wet in the no pile, and I'll just make a note. Or Kerry, if you could make a note that that slash elevated stage. Okay, let's talk about, uh, the kitchen that, that would support that three hundred person community room and events hall. This one's a caterers kitchen. It's the one I talked about earlier in the presentation. This one's a commercial kitchen, and, uh, this is four hundred and thirty-one thousand versus two hundred and fifty-one thousand. And, uh, you can see the difference making food, warming food, warming, okay. We didn't talk about this, but is there any interest in a wood shop? Okay, that's what I had guessed. Now I want to talk about gymnasium space and, and, um, don't construe that gymnasium is all sports. In fact, we talked a little bit about that it could actually be some of your conference or, or exhibit kind of trade show space. But these are based on, um, single high school court. So I'm basing it on a basketball court size, full eight, uh, fifty by eighty-four foot basketball court with two cross courts that are thirty-eight by sixty-eight. So that's an elementary size. This one's a little slightly bigger at, uh, double middle school courts. So we're talking about three million dollars for this one, three point nine million dollars for that one. And, uh, these are traditional wood courts, uh, in these cases. I'm gonna talk a little bit about MAC here next, which is multi-activity court with a synthetic surface.
I, I don't like the traditional route.
You do or do not?
I do not.
You do not?
I'd rather go with the synthetic.
I'm in support of the MAC gym as well.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? All right, let's talk about MAC gym. So I've got two MAC gyms. You'll, uh, recognize these photographs. This is small. It's sixty-two hundred square feet, based on a, uh, volleyball court size and its safety zones. It could be used for indoor soccer, floor hockey, baseball cages, volleyball court. It has a poured polyurethane or a rubber floor. It could be used for your trade show. It could be used for bounty. It could be used for bounce houses and so on. 1.7, about 1.8 million on that one. This one's slightly bigger. This one's based on a single high school basketball court with, um, its safety zones. So this one's 9,700 gross square feet and 2.8 million dollars. There's some seating with that too, about 100 people. Yep. Bleacher seating. Right, tip and roll bleachers for 100 on both of them, storage room for both of them, so kind of all inclusive on these.
What's the difference between the revenue and expense of the first one versus the second? Cause there's only about a 3,000 square foot difference, but it looks like the revenue expenses, there's a lot of difference.
Right, because it's smaller, you can actually, and, and what you can put in here, actually the revenue looks a little bit better on the smaller one because the revenue, you know, the conditioning, air conditioning and the staffing of a smaller one. Um, so the span between those two is greater on the smaller one than it is on this one. Now, of course, those stars can all realign themselves based on how you program it, so. I think the key is, is to know that these can support themselves. They can make their non-money losers mayor, I think is how you put it.
Comments from the council? Is there a demand here for this?
That's kinda one of my pet projects. I kinda had the idea that we were gonna build this somewhere near North Cass where somebody was gonna build hotels, so I was thinking maybe the convention space could be a good revenue maker.
I'm not really sure on the size. I just don't have that much experience. I think there will be a great demand for this among the sporting community because we don't have any indoor space right now. Our Parks and Recs department has to utilize the schools for pretty much all of our indoor space, especially during weather, you know, when we go into colder weather right now. Everything is dependent on the school system. And we have a lot of teams that participate in, you know, when weather's good outside, but are looking for indoor space to practice when weather's bad. I'm not sure on the size. I just, I don't know.
Is the demand then being handled by the use of the schools?
Well, for programming, but I mean, for example, for, for practice, if I wanna take my footsall team somewhere, I don't get it. Footsall, we just, we go play. We don't get to practice. Um, indoor soccer, you gotta go to Johnson County. You gotta go to Independence.
I will say that if basketball is one of those sports, this one's not big enough. This one's based on a volleyball court, whereas this one's based on a high school basketball court.
You know, I, I definitely lean more to the bigger is better adage, especially with the event type space. And I, and you might cover this here shortly, but if we were going to put a walking trail around this area, does that increase the cost, which, the walking or the jogging trail or the track, which one is it designed for? Is it designed for the bigger space or the smaller space?
I'm gonna get to the jogging track here in a moment.
So I, I would lean to the bigger one.
What you'll notice on both of these is that the jogging, walking track is not in this space because they're for high velocity sports like batting and kicking a soccer ball, like footsall around. And so we actually keep the walk jog track out of this space and maybe over a space like fitness or the lobby atrium or something like that. In fact, when we have a, a walking jog track touch this space, we actually separate it not with a rail, but with glass, so that that soccer ball can glance off.
You don't want your joggers to become targets, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. That is what I'm saying.
Again, I'm in support of this, not only because I think there's a demand and we'll utilize it, but also it could be cross, it's got cross-reference uses for convention space. I really like that. If you're spending your money, you guys are the experts, which one do you buy and why?
Typically, this one is bought when you're doing a wood basketball court in support of that one. So since you're not doing a wood court, I would definitely lean towards this one. Cause this one's really not a standalone space. This one's in support of, whereas this one could stand alone, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think that kinda plays into the uniqueness that we kinda wanted with this, that we wouldn't be competing with other people with the same things.
Are there comments, councilman? Okay.
Based on that, I'm gonna join Ryan. I think the larger, larger space.
Is there any desire for gymnastics dedicated space? Okay. All right, let's move on to the elevated walk jog track. Uh, these two tracks are, uh, small and large. So this one's 12 laps per mile, three lanes. The reason we do three lanes is people tend to walk in pairs and run in pairs. And by having that third lane, it provides a non-conflict kind of area for walkers and joggers. Views into activity spaces, views to the outdoors, 430, 4,300 square foot track and a 500 square foot stretching area, $1 million. This one's a longer track. It's nine laps per mile, three lanes and 600 square feet of stretching. You can see that the expense-revenue is, is low in both categories.
This has to be elevated over something.
Yes.
So, uh, the spaces that we've talked about so far, what is it gonna be elevated over those spaces?
So, so far you haven't chosen a space for it to be elevated above, except for the first.
Yeah, we have that 300.
The second card which has the lobby and lounge and so on, it could be elevated as. Yes, that's right. Hanging off the.
It's gonna be a hamster run, right?
Can we come back to this then? After we, can we bury it in the pile and come back to it after we've had some more discussion?
We could, we could come back to.
One of the thoughts that I had on this, cause I had been in a place in St. Louis and I can't remember where, what they did was they had a large room in the middle, kinda like the Memorial Station discussion, and it broke off into classes, but the walkway around the outside of that was extended width. I thought that was like an ADA thing. They said, no, actually we found we didn't need to put in a walk track. We just made that wider around there and people naturally just walked around it because it was so large that the few people that congregated and stopped, nobody was colliding, they didn't actually have to do the elevated. So is, have you guys ever put in anything that was not necessarily this format?
I would warn against actually doing that because people are running and walking. By, if you used a corridor, which essentially is what you've just described, that maybe makes access to classrooms or some other things on an upper level, and actually have people that are serious about their exercise, you're gonna have conflict. And so the vast majority of our civic centers have a dedicated elevated walk jog track with no conflicts. They're not used to circulate through the building.
When you're gonna have machines like ellipticals and treadmills whatnot, do you still need something like that?
Yes, uh, these make a very great compliment for a fitness center that has cardiovascular circuit training and so on. Those of you that may have been out to the new Olathe Community Center, the elevated walk jog track goes around their gym, around their fitness center, touches their pool, looks down into it, looks down into their lobby. It's, uh, it's one of these long elevated walk jog tracks in that particular case. So I would suggest that we could set these aside and see what else we're gonna add here to see which size. I think you need to do one of these based on the survey results would be my counsel to you. So let's talk about weights and fitness. And so these are cardiovascular training, circuit resistant training, free weight training areas. And they're usually all combined into one kind of fitness center. Uh, this is the smaller of the three. This is 4,400 gross square feet, about 1.7 million dollars. Uh, generates more cash than it costs. This one is the next step up, 6,500 gross square feet, 2.5 million dollars. And then I guess those are the only two I've got. So these, these are two that we chose that we thought would be appropriate for the population of Raymore.
Comments from the council? Go ahead.
I'm a little iffy on this considering we've got a lot of private entities in town that do the same thing. I really wouldn't wanna force them out of business, so I'm not really sure how I feel about that.
If I might respond to that. Uh, a community civic center is normally the primer or the place where people learn to use this type of equipment. People that wouldn't even step foot into a private gym would come to a civic center and utilize this space to learn, A, what is my fitness assessment? B, what kind of routine could I start? You know, how do you use a treadmill? How do you jump onto an elliptipar and that kind of thing? And so what we're finding is that community centers, civic centers that create this kind of space actually create the entry level for your private businesses. So, uh, let's, let's say that I join the Raymore Civic Center so I can learn how to utilize a treadmill, an elliptical machine. And six months later, I wanna step it up to a new level. Maybe I've achieved my, my health goal and I want to now start building, you know, muscular structure. This isn't the place to do that typically in the, in the civic building. Then I would probably join a private gym to get that more personalized service. So they, uh, they often go hand in hand within a community, is my.
If I could follow up. Being that it is an entry level, do you think that they should have free weights? Seems like that could be a recipe for disaster for beginners.
I've based each one of these cards on the following percentages. 50% cardiovascular, 30% circuit training, so that's 80% right there is that. I have put 20% towards free weights only because it's a trend in lots of different activities that utilize free weights, usually not the 40 pounds and over kind of free weights. Um, but, but some of the smaller's from, from two and a half pounds to the 30 pounds are used in different activities. Yeah, does that make sense?
I think one of the reasons why I seem to be a little hesitant or cautious is that I, I know that when we first started this conversation, the big concern that we had was we didn't wanna duplicate Belton's High Blue rooms. And I know that a lot of Raymore residents already currently have a membership over there. So a lot of that introduction has actually already occurred. And, uh, you know, I, I know that, uh, I guess I'm, I, that's why I'm cautious. So I kinda see, we already are offering that to citizens. I think we were looking at other community things. So that's, I'm not against this. I just, that's not been my focal point.
Sure.
I would support the smaller of the two, but only as a maybe as our, actually as the cost conversation progresses. You know, to see, seeing where we're at, when we add the other amenities that we know that we want, then if there's still, you know, money under the cap, so to speak, maybe entertain that conversation.
One of the things I need to, I think we need to consider when we look at this, besides, you know, we have High Blue right next door. I feel like they've kind of moved up to that next step. I, if you look at the services they provide and the people that go there with their garage they have now and all that, I feel like they don't, I mean, they've got some of the entry level people, yeah, but they've also moved up into that higher level of, of fitness. I don't know what you person. Um, but I feel like when, when we look at this, I feel like one of the important things to consider is why are people gonna go there? If we don't have something there to bring people in, then our only income is going to be through the meeting rooms or through sports, um, groups coming to use the gyms. So thinking money-wise, what, what's gonna make people want to buy a membership? If we don't have something there for them to buy a membership, then we're only going to get money from people renting the rooms. And honestly, my experience with most people or most groups I'm involved with that are looking for rooms to, to rent, they don't have a whole lot of money to pay for them. There's the smaller groups are looking for a free or very low-cost room. Here and there, you're gonna get bigger groups that can pay for it. Here and there, you're gonna get some of the, the showers and the receptions and that sort of thing that can pay larger dollar for rooms. But my concern with leaving this out is the bottom dollar. If we don't have a reason for people to come there other than the meeting rooms, we're not gonna have anyone who buys a membership. This is what's gonna bring people and have the consistent money coming in, in my opinion.
I would add also, Councilwoman, that as we move into the other specialized fitness areas like aerobics and spinning and those other things that it appears the residents are interested in, if you don't have this, the other ones don't work collectively as an operation. So, point well made.
Are there comments from the council? Any, may, maybe?
I, I think, I share the same concerns as everyone else and I agree with, with Sonya. I think there would be a demand for it. I think it's kind of a critical element. I, I'm, I'm Larry the Cost, of course. Uh, so I would, I think I'd support Ryan's position. I'd be more in favor of the maybe on the lower cost option.
I'll put the lower cost option in the maybe and the higher in the no. All right, let's talk about aerobics, dance, uh, first. This would be group exercise like these. They range from $688,000 to $923,000. The difference being capacity. This one is a 30 to 36-person studio. This is for aerobics, exercise, dance, martial arts, et cetera. It's typically a sprung wood floor with a bar and mirror system, a high-end sound system, ventilation and cooling, and then storage that goes with that. This one accommodates 32 to 40 people, so it's a capacity issue. So you can see the expense-revenue graph, very helpful to your overall operation.
Now, can any of these other rooms that we've already identified be used for this?
Yes, we have some smaller models of our community centers that utilize their multipurpose room, particularly if we install a sprung floor, which is not uncommon because even for wedding receptions, you like this kind of floor for dancing. So yes, it absolutely could. I will, uh, tell you that these spaces are most popular before work, at noon and after work. So there's prime slots in each workday, Monday through Friday, where these are very popular. You can't, you actually can't have enough of these rooms during those particular slots. There's slow times between those, those three slots that I, I named. However, um, those centers that have a dedicated room like this, and I can tell you that the trend nationally is to have more than one of these rooms, whether it's this or spinning, which I'm gonna talk about next. Those that have multipurpose community events hall, like the one you chose, this 300 capacity, actually use that room for overflow during those peak times. Right? So you might have a Monday class at 6:30 a.m. that this room, this room and that room have classes going on inside them. And that wouldn't be uncommon for a population of Raymore to have that. Very popular. These are, well, you saw yoga. It's off the charts.
Yeah.
275% higher than nine years ago.
Kevin?
I'm kinda curious, who are the clientele that, that fill those rooms up during those, those peak times? Because what I, what I think I'm hearing, and I, I've been wrong many times, but, um, I can see a lot of the people that I work with utilizing that. Problem is.
You're in Kansas City?
I'm in Kansas City. You know, that, that's where Black and Beach is. That's where Honeywell is. That's where Barnes and McDonald is. That's where all the big Sprint, all of them are, are in Kansas City. You know, Raymore drives to work to there. So, you know, that, that's my concern about that. You know, I like the idea, but.
That's why the 5:30 class is very popular.
Ryan and Sonya?
On the back, on your expense and revenue graph, does that, is that just the, the cost and revenue to, to construct the room? Or is that actually ongoing?
It's ongoing.
To operate it?
That's right, yeah. So this is capital expense and this is ongoing.
I have no doubt those rooms would be full in Raymore because I know I've tried to go to classes at High Blue and there hasn't been room. I mean, it's amazing how full the classes there are. I'm hesitant though, because I know we've tried to have classes here in Raymore and have not been really successful, but I don't know the reasons why. Jim, I don't know if you know, with our aerobics classes, have, have they faltered because of lack of interest? Because of lack of space? Because of lack of instructors? Right? The only one that I know that we've kept going consistently, consistently is yoga.
You know, Kathy and I think there was another instructor, Kathy and Sherman is one of our dispatchers.
one of our dispatchers downstairs. I know that those classes were very, very successful. Um, it could have been the, the space that was involved. I mean, we were using the community room and, you know, if you're doing any kind of, any kind of, uh, dance that's going to take up a lot of space moving around the floor, the floor didn't necessarily lend itself to it, uh, because it was the tile floor down there. Um, it, so I, I think it had a lot to do with the room. Uh, if you had a specialized room, uh, there, there's a conceivable chance that it would be, um, significantly more successful as far as the draw is concerned. Where if you're swinging someone around, you're not throwing them through a plate glass window.
Good point.
Uh, I, I would actually support, um, choosing one and, and put it into the maybe conversation for as, you know, as we start to go back and, and kind of hone it down.
Okay. Uh, would you like the small or the bigger? Small in the maybe, bigger in the no. All right, the next one is specialized, so... It could be this space or also the spinning. No, there's spinning in here somewhere. There it is. Okay. So these are also based on capacity. This is small, this is large, sixteen to twenty-person spinning studio, fourteen-hundred gross square feet, three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, accommodates sixteen to twenty, bike spinning classes, it's got a sprung wood floor, bar and mirror system similar to the one we just talked about. This is a medium size, this is thirty-two to forty-person spinning studio and, uh, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, similar revenue expense graphs. So when you think about, this is almost the same discussion that we just had, you think about these in pairs. Typically, what we're doing is, is one of these and one of these in, in pairs for a community.
Again, I, I have to play kind of ignorant on this. Obviously, I've seen spinning classes, but I have no idea what the demand is or would be. I mean, I, I would, if I leaned away, I'd lean small, but again, if, you know, I don't, I know High Blue has some spinning classes, there may be a huge demand. I just.
Mm-hmm. That was terrible.
Was there a drum roll after that?
No, just a big drum.
If, if we use just a standard membership rate, what is the payback period for a room like this using, you know, you know, because you have, you know, hi- high revenue, you know, lower expense? Wh- when's the break-even point?
Are you trying to, uh, suggest that the amount of money that you would make per year on a space like this, how much, how many years would it take you to pay back the capital cost of the room? I have no idea. It would take a while.
You have the operating costs, you're happy.
Yes.
Sonya?
I love the idea of the specialized room that have like, where they can choose the video and work like that. Um, I don't, I personally don't see cycle, a cycling room as something that would make so much money because you can only have so many classes during that busy time. It's not a class that you would be able to relocate if the class is full to the multipurpose room or something.
What I like about, uh, pardon me, what I like about the small one is it's like that one. What I've got here is a four-hundred square foot storage room, so you could take all the bikes and put them away and do that. So if you thought about adding this kiosk with the on-demand fitness, that this, this particular studio, because it's small, would actually serve you quite well for both. So I would, could I suggest that the large one goes in the no pile?
Yeah, the small one goes the maybe.
Okay. How about racquetball? It was in your survey, it didn't come very high. Its expense-revenue is not great. Yeah. All right. Is there a need for a fitness testing room? And this would be, this card represents two two-hundred square foot rooms. You could use it for massage or physical therapy or occupation therapy. Uh, this is where you would have maybe a treadmill with a computer and actually do fitness assessments for your residents. Now, I don't know if Raymore is different than other communities, but America is at a crossroads when it comes to fighting obesity in our communities. And this is a, not an expensive space at a hundred and twenty-six thousand, but it's in association with some of these, uh, fitness areas that we talked about.
The space is not my concern, it's the use of the space almost demands, um, that we have the recurring cost of the person doing the massage, doing the physical therapy and medical expert who does the testing. So it's not really the room that to me, I fear about the cost. It's we have to have somebody and pay somebody to come in to perform the service to use the room or be a partnership.
Right. Is that a maybe? That's a no? Okay. All right, let's talk about, uh, the community gathering for theatrical performances. So, uh, as I suggested, these are some different pictures of a three-hundred perform, uh, three-hundred-seat performing arts, uh, theater. This has all the things that you would expect would be on this card. It has the theater lobby lounge, so the gathering beforehand, uh, the audience seating for three hundred, box office and administration, the performance area, stage, a crossover corridor behind the stage, control booths, stage lighting, dimmer rooms, sound system rack rooms, dressing rooms, green rooms, backstage toilets, loading, holding areas, seating.
We will have someplace for the Raymore Symphony to meet.
That's right, the Raymore Symphony, good. Yeah.
The, uh, the school district has the national theater. Is there some way that they would let outsiders come in and use it for, say, either Raymore or Pachulia special program, rather than having to build a theater of our own? Do you know, you've been on the school board, what about for the rest of it?
I, I don't know if anybody has asked them. Whoop.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that, um, with enough, uh, with enough money, they would be willing to entertain proposals.
They do. Some of the dance studios have their recitals at the, at the high school theaters.
It's beautiful, I'd love to have it, but that one's just, that's, that's buying a Rolls Royce. Like, we, I don't think we can afford that. And I envision that if we wanted to do something like that, we would make do with the, uh, the space with the elevator stage. I mean, it wouldn't be nearly as fancy, but we could utilize it in that fashion.
Right. This is more high-end.
I kind of thought we already had sort of a multi-purpose meeting room with the stage, but I would like to have. And the lighting and whatnot in that same room.
Okay.
Early on, when I, when I was kind of thinking some of this out, some of the universities I've taught at have had tiered classrooms that really only sat about a hundred people, but the bottom area was actually a small stage. So it could double as a theater and stage, but also fit some of the classroom space, but it would be about a third of the size. And they've effectively used that. I, I'm with you guys, I'm not sure we need to duplicate what the high schools already had, since they'd be the ones doing the majority of the theater anyway. Uh, but the, I, I am attracted to the general concept of a tiered classroom, uh, but I know that we've got a lot of stuff going on here.
Right, so the tiered classroom would actually be like that eighty, eighty-seater that I showed earlier, tiered like that. Is that kind of what, if that had a stage at the bottom?
That's a tie.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, well, definitely, you've, you've selected a, an events room with an elevated stage with a flat floor that's going to serve lots and lots of community events. This would be, um, not necessarily for the Raymore Symphony. However, this is more of a high-end performing art. I mean, if you really wanted to get into the performing arts game, um, so at the council's mercy, I'm going to put, uh, the three-hundred, the four-hundred, and the five-hundred person in here. Now, let's talk about, uh, special events for the outdoors. And this is a new amphitheater we just broke ground on in South Lake, Texas. This is an amphitheater that seats two-hundred and fifty, it has a lawn seating for five-hundred uh, on the green area that you're seeing there. It has a covered stage and band shelter, a stage storage, some stage restrooms, uh, audience, restrooms for men and women, um, an A.V. allowance of about eighty thousand dollars, and additional parking for two-hundred and fifty cars, and is about two-point-one million dollars for. Is that right?
I, I love the idea of this, uh, but isn't this option really dependent on our final site selection and whether or not it can accommodate?
Oh, sure.
So, um, me personally, I mean, I love the option, I think it's great, but to me it'd be more of a maybe depending on the final, final place where we put it. I mean, if it goes in, if it goes in Hawcrich, wonderful.
Well, let me ask you this, and, and actually, uh, I may want to ask Mr. Crass to comment on this. With the exception of the elevation, are, isn't this somewhat what is being proposed for the farmer's market area on a slightly smaller scale? So we actually are kind of achieving that. Um, I mean, I don't know if there's any need or demand for elevation, to add elevation, that'd add a lot of cost to the farmer's market, but just the base, we already kind of have a base model going in the community anyway.
Both in the farmer's market and a larger one, I believe, was in the Hawcrich Park master plan.
All right, so is this a no? Okay. Um, I would like to revisit, now that we know what we have in the yes pile, and I'll just go over it again. You have a Mac Gym, you have a caterer's kitchen that supports a three-hundred person community events hall, and an elevated stage that also could serve as an arts and crafts room. You have a twenty-five person classroom, uh, required building support spaces and admin spaces. With that, do we need a child watch babysitting room?
Well, i- if we're going to add in services for families or people to work out at the, at a gym or to play in, um, on basketball courts or the multipurpose courts and all these different activities, I think we're incorporating, encompassing the whole family. And at that point, you're going to have people who are going to need some childcare. So I like the idea of the child watch and babysitting in light of some of the things we've added to the yes pile.
I would concur. Uh, you know, especially if we, if we have the three-hundred person, um, and the elevated stage, then, you know, that almost begs that there's someplace to, to drop kids off.
I li- I like that too. I think we kind of need it with the fitness center and things. And then we can also think outside the box, and we don't have a library here. We could do story time, we could do play groups, we could do that sort of thing and meet some more needs in that space, but it's not one of the times that we would use it, that it would be full from the fitness center.
Yes, yes, we would have to hire.
Other comments? I would contend you don't need this space unless you do some of these maybe spaces. What's really going to drive the need for this space are moms that are coming to work out and go to group exercise, and those are in your maybe pile. So I would contend that this goes in your maybe pile.
I'd agree.
Okay. All right. Now that we know, um, the other spaces, I want to talk about the, uh, elevated walk-jog tracks. Uh, twelve laps per mile versus nine laps per mile. If you were to ask my opinion, I think the spaces you've chosen, you could go with the small one. I really do.
Do a lot of places on the small one.
Okay. All right, so, um, I have a couple more here that I want to talk about, and they're, they have to do with the outside of the building. I think this would be really popular here. This would be a civic plaza water feature. So this is an area of the building, and we don't have a site yet. It would be a nice place for community gathering, and then when there's a bunch of kids, turn the water feature on, and it comes right out of the plaza. And maybe you have, uh, these here in Raymore or not, I'm not sure. But wouldn't it be great for a community gathering to have a, a feature like this? And it's about three-seventy-five.
It's very seasonal as well, isn't it?
Yeah, definitely seasonal.
Mr. Mayor? We have one of those proposed down at the farmer's market in what staff has proposed just two weeks ago.
Okay. Is that a no? Okay. All right. Um, you don't need this one. So we haven't had a discussion yet about sustainability. So sustainability, green architecture, you might have heard architects talk about. Um, talks about the natural daylighting, lighting controls, for instance, the lights go off when there's occupancy sensors, uh, water efficiency devices so that Raymore's using less water in the building, uh, building envelope upgrades, so you have a highly insulated building, H.B.A.C. system upgrades. We're estimating that would be about two-hundred thousand dollars for, for your civic center.
Okay, on something like that, what's, what's the payback time?
Uh, it depends on, on what, you can see it's a, obviously, it's all about payback. So, uh, depending on what upgrades that we actually do, they could be anywhere from a payback of two years to, you know, as many as twenty years, depending on the system we're talking about. This is a very complex issue, and I wouldn't get into the details of it.
Well, I'll just speak for myself, the ones that have a payback of two years are very attractive.
Sure. Right, because council's terms are two years. I understand. Totally get that.
The mayor's three.
The mayor's three, so anything over four is just a.
Isn't there a, um, through the state of Missouri, uh, isn't there a special zone that we could designate that any type of energy efficiency, um, programs get some special type of tax incentive? And I forget it, I forget what it's called. Um, I, but, but it, it's actually, it's, it's a status that you apply, uh, for through the state.
Uh, there are some tax credits available on the, yeah, on the Missouri side for some sustainability things. I, I don't know the details of it, but there are tax credits, so I'm not sure if it benefits a public entity, but sometimes public entities can actually sell those tax credits to a private entity to, to gain that impact from it. So.
Steve, let me ask you a question, because obviously you're selling, or this card is selling the general concept. As we put this in, I'm assuming when you guys start kind of putting the, the thing on the table, you're going to break out, here's some sustain- sustainability options.
That's right.
Here are ones that have a quicker rate of return, here's what doesn't, we can kind of pick and choose.
That's correct. So this is the overall general.
So I would say yes, subject to what we end up seeing.
We're trying to build a budget, and so I want to know, should we provide a two-hundred thousand dollar allowance to explore all those things?
I'm going to be a pessimist here because I'm a powerhouse engineer. Just for my colleagues' benefits, when we were at Bannister, we had these wonderful heat exchangers called what we called free cooling. And they were very expensive, and they were sold on sustainability and green, but don't get me going. After two years of use, they were clogged up and they couldn't be used anymore because they wouldn't transfer the heat during the cold, the cold weather, you know? So it was cheaper for us to actually use our full-blown chillers to dehumidify the plant than it was to use the free cooling that we spent millions of dollars on that worked for two years and never worked after that.
I don't know, I've, I've kind of done that at my own house, and, uh, thirty-five, thirty-five hundred square foot house, my biggest bill during the summer was a hundred and five dollars, so I think there is some payback on something like that.
I'm definitely supportive of the, of the, the portion of that that shuts the lights off when people aren't in there, you know, that, you know, we can regulate temperature and, you know, when it's not. So there, there are aspects of it that I like. Before, I would actually prove a full-blown green project, uh, you know, we definitely want to have a conversation, but aspects of it, I absolutely think should be a part of every building, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Councilmember Huvok, could you went to the floor?
Yes, I wanted to ask the council, how many of you are currently working out in some sort of a, uh, a group? Do you go over to Belton? Do you have, um, only one other there? Or three of you? Okay, and how many of you will, after we get it built, how many of you will use it? You aren't going to use it. You aren't going to use it? I'm not going to use it, you... So, I guess I'm trying to figure out is, what is it we really want? We've seen lots of beautiful pictures and everything, and we know, but you're talking about everything that we have said yes we wanted, we're going to have to hire people. And I cannot see us hiring people to sit there and babysit. It's not our place to hire people to sit there and to watch them work out and things like that. That's not what we're, as a council, and our taxpayer money is supposed to be used for. We have businesses already here in town that provide a lot of the things that we said we wanted to use. If you're not using them, that's, you know, that's your own affair. But why would we want to go ahead and duplicate businesses that we already have in town?
Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To answer that, it's to what, I'm sorry, Steve has told us, and I've heard this before this, too, is that for the cardio stuff that we're thinking about putting in, it's all entry-level stuff where people will use that primarily initially and get used to it and then move on, which will supplement the businesses around Raymore. Now, part of that thinking is that also that that will up, that'll give the opportunity of the private businesses to up their services because then they'll now have competition, and it will, it just, I believe what they're saying is that it is a starting block for many people. Now, to get on the other side, is that one discussion that has not come up tonight, and my own personal opinion is, as Kevin Kellogg, not councilman Kevin, we have not talked about swimming pool, and thank God we are not, because I wouldn't vote for it. But with swimming pool comes, you have to have lifeguards. We're not talking about that. We've already ruled that out, you know? And that's part, you know, I see the childcare, not the childcare, the babysitter service very similarly to like that of the lifeguards that many municipalities use. So, it's always, not always, but mostly teenage kids that are doing this for a job, you know? And I think we somewhat got that through our summer programs already.
Well, and if I'm not mistaken, I think everything that so far is in the yes pile, at this point, is a per-use or per-event type of a situation, that there's nothing that actually runs full-time or 24/7. So, at this point in the conversation, anything that we've added, actually, and don't shoot me because I'm going to say it even though it's not 100% true, doesn't require full-time people at this point? I mean, it's a mixture of part-time and contract and things of that nature. Is that correct?
Well, I don't remember what's on the cards, but I do remember that we were talking about the green, what was the title of that last card? Sustainability.
Maintenance of that building is going to be full-time.
Where are we with the sustainability? I heard we're good, we're good with sustainability? Okay. We're good with the sustainability, at least portions of it. The ones that get two-year payback, for sure.
You know, and again, to kind of talk about the question that was posed, I know some of the options that we've put in here, there are not competition and are not, are services not being offered in Raymore. Some are, some aren't. And, you know, again, but I think the purpose for me of this exercise was, we have had a large, broad conversation about a whole slew of things that everybody wants in a civic center, but tonight's our first night that we actually have a chance to kind of help whittle that down, look at some costs. I mean, I'll compliment, the biggest compliment I'll give tonight is, it's wonderful to see what are our construction costs, what are our revenue to expenses. I mean, wonderful presentation that is very functional for me to get a grasp of this. So, and we've had some chances to look at yes, nos, and maybes, and some maybes may become yeses, and yeses drop down to nos and all these different things. But this is a great step that we haven't taken to date. So, today, to me, it's, we're not resolving this, we're not building this yet, but we're giving the consultants a better idea, at least of a direction, and we'll kind of figure it out from there. Like with the sustainability thing, we're yes to the concept, but we're not to the specifics yet. We want to see that, and that's going to be, I think, across the board.
Jeffrey?
Just based on our picks, do you have a range of costs?
What was your question?
Based on our picks so far, do you have any kind of a range of costs?
Yes. You're slightly over your bonding capacity.
The yes pile that's going around totals $9.9 million.
And that doesn't include the acquisition of land, right?
Doesn't include the acquisition of land, it doesn't include the development of that site, even though how big it is.
Right, right.
I can give you suggestions on how big it should be. Equipping the building, all the other soft development costs like engineering fees and material testing and that sort of thing. So, it would be pretty quick to, if you went back to my slide about the difference between construction costs and project costs, it'd be easy to take this $9.9 million figure and give you a total project cost. So, as an example, I'm just going to round up. If it's a $10 million building cost that Derek is holding there, on average, site development costs are 11% of building costs. So, 11% would be 1.1 million, right? I'm doing that math in my head. So, you're up to 11.1 million dollars with building and site development. This is not site acquisition, so I'm not sure how much the site would cost you to acquire, or if you own parkland or other assets within the city that this could be placed in. Development costs are probably in the range of 30% to 40% for those other costs. So, that's equipping your building, that's all the engineering, material testing, and so on. So, that would take you from 11.1 to, what would that be, another $4 million, let's say? So, you're talking about a $15 million total project cost off the bat for that yes pile, not including this maybe.
Because I remember the inflationary variable in there, is that pre or post that variable?
That's included.
Included in the graph.
Yes. So, this is assuming, like the cards say, midpoint of construction, January 2017, our best guess.
15 million was the estimate.
1.5 would be the total project cost, including construction. 15, 1.5.
Not including land acquisition, if we needed a...
That's in that figure. Yes. I have not estimated that.
Question for staff. I know that we just increased how much we have in the budget for the civic center. Between that and the potential bond that's available, what does that total?
There is one and a half million dollars in the budget set aside for the project, and there is approximately $9 million in no-tax increase. You have to remember that for the no-tax increase, I'd estimate approximately 8.2 would actually be able to go to the project fund, the rest is fees, because it would be a new bond issue. So, you've got about 8.2 and 1.5.
So, just to sum up, the construction cost of the yes pile is about $10 million. Site development, I would allow about 1.1, not including acquisition. And then, soft costs of about another $4 million for a total project cost of 15.1 million dollars. If you don't pass that around, Mayor.
Can I see the yes pile again?
Sure. Now, what do you do with the maybe pile? The maybe pile has some that are substitutions. For instance, if $10 million is too much for the council to bear, we could take the 300-person space down to the 240-person space, as an example. We could reduce the capacity, which reduces your capital expense, which reduces your operation expense, also reduces your revenue flows. The other thing we could do, and this is going to be my recommendation based on this game, is areas like the child watch babysitting, the spinning studio, specialized fitness space, the aerobics dance studio, the weights and fitness space, those spaces, which all work together in an operations, could be a separate phase. So, if we acquired a piece of land that was large enough to build in first phase, the yes pile, we could master plan these in a future addition that might make sense for, as Raymore grows and expands. The worst thing a city can do is provide two acres of land to provide for a civic center that really requires 10 acres of land, and you're stuck, right? So, choosing the land is a very important step that the city of Raymore needs to look at in the near future. I would suggest, how many square feet is the yes pile? Okay. No, no. I'm about to make a recommendation as soon as I know how big it is. Kerry's going to...
I was just looking. Yeah. We pull out that maintenance, that one that must go in, that was a couple million, $3 million.
I would also suggest to you that, talking about the cafe, I don't think you need this card. You have a caterer's kitchen, you have a food service operation, you have a lounge in the cards. To have this $192,000 white elephant, which is what it would be, based on my experience of community centers around the country, this thing would sit empty. Someone suggested, Kevin, I think you suggested, maybe we'd get a tenant for this? No tenant is going to last long in a space like this. Because there are for... Yeah, there's a for-profit motive, right? And if...
Unless it was a vending machine.
Yes.
You know, put your 30 cents in, get a cup of coffee. Jeffrey? Council want to take it out or leave it in? Take it out? You convinced them.
All right.
That was the maybe. That wasn't even in the list, was it?
Okay, so we're about 36,000 gross square feet. It's a pretty nice, modest civic center. That is less than an acre. Parking is usually about the same size as the building, so that's two acres. There's... We're going to need your land to put...
You know what? That's the best suggestion I've heard all night.
So, you've got a snow sledding hill during, seasonally, very nice.
So, you're donating your property to the...
Is that what we heard? I'm going to suggest that a building site of five to seven acres would be very nice for a building, particularly if you need to expand it.
And that was going to be my question, that would handle the expansion, including additional parking and stuff like that?
Yes, because the expansion looks like 3,000, another 10,000 feet. That is an exercise that we would need to look into, once we develop this summary of space, and then, we would get together with Darren Barr, who you saw earlier that did your market analysis, and he would make recommendations on staffing it. And he would also make recommendations on what a pro forma would look like on the operation expense and potential revenue flows to cover those operational expense.
Once, the council may remember, this is what it, this is programmed for, is a series of three workshops, on the first work session tonight, and then, the first work session in December, first work session in January, to get those questions answered. The first question that we need to answer, though, is, is what is it? Which is kind of the point of tonight. And of course, what it is right now is a lot more than we have revenues from, as far as a no-tax increase bond issue and what you all have set aside prior to this. So, one of the components of a future discussion, if you want to keep all of the elements that are here and add on, would involve the obvious tax increase bond issue, to go with the no-tax increase bond issue, if you wanted to keep all those in, or would it be the council's desire to proceed with pulling elements out, shrinking elements, and having that concept brought to you for workshop two, as far as what could be done to get it within that initial constraint of no-tax increase bond issue and money set aside?
Well, I'll ask the council for comment, but one of the things that I heard this evening that is very attractive to me is this concept of phasing. We can certainly phase something that the council has identified as a yes item. Doesn't have to be, it's still a yes item, but it's not today yes, it's tomorrow yes. Councilmembers?
I'm going to make a request. I almost want to ask for a little homework here, because this was amazing, but it's also a lot of information. If we could get a list of, and it doesn't have to be the cards, but just the title of the cards, what was in our yes, what was in our maybe, what was in our no? Just because, again, so much was thrown out, and I thought we did whittle down quite a bit, but at the same time, I kind of want to digest this a little bit, because this was a lot.
And I was going to add, Mr. Blackmore, and this was incredible. There is no way, when we began this evening, that I thought this council could work to get a list of items that they could agree on, and a list of items that they could say, well, maybe, and a list of items, and say, no, that doesn't fit. So, this, your card game is really neat.
It is neat.
I don't think it'll ever work in Vegas, but for this, for this, it works great.
Plays in Missouri.
Another comment?
Then, I think what I'm hearing is that you'd like them to go back, do their homework, get you a yes list, a maybe list, and perhaps a conceptual phasing grouping for those, and the costs that are associated, square footage, and that would be our starting point, our starting point for workshop two? Is that good? Is that good with you, Kerry?
Yeah, but what we had originally planned, and, you know, we can be flexible on this, but this next, after tonight, we would start actually doing some concept plans, developing some ideas on how this might lay out, how it might phase. So, would that be acceptable for us to come back with those concepts to review with you? There'll be some different options and different ways of doing that.
What I think would be great is, as you guys are working forward, I mean, you kind of see with the budget that we're dealing with.
Right.
Since you're the designers and the experts, kind of lay that out to where, what makes logical sense to add what room in the next part of the building, and how that would add on and expand and move forward.
Finally, would the council be wanting to consider both pulling out items to get to a final plan, as well as shrinking items? As Steve had indicated, going from this size of a room to this size of a room with this capacity?
Well, and that's why I wanted to see the yes and the maybe list, so we can get an idea of what we might want to add, subtract, size, you know, expand, contract kind of thing.
That, and the other thing is, is that going from 300 to 240, that was one of the steps in there, that's a reduction of 60. I don't know what that means from a facility standpoint, and that's where I'd need, you know, information from y'all, but said, hey, this reduction means this. But said, hey, this, this reduction means this. Other comments from the council? You have enough information to move forward?
We do, sir.
Great, good deal.
This, this was a great exercise. Y'all worked together really well. Does this happen every, every Monday night?
More, more often than not, okay? More often than not.
I'm going to leave the card game with you. I just took photographs of your yes and maybe pile, and that gives us the information we need. So however you want to use this, this deck of cards.
Fantastic. And we'll run copies of the cards.
Okay, great, excellent.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay. I've had a request for a five-minute break. That means we're back in here at a quarter after. And then remember, the cameras are still running.
That was incredible. I really didn't think you'd be able to pull that off.
All righty. Well, I asked everybody to be back at a quarter after. It's a little after a quarter after, so missed it by a few minutes. We have the second item this evening in the work session is the Roundabout feature presentation. Kevin, I believe this is your item.
Actually, it's not just mine. It's the subcommittee.
Okay, the subcommittee item.
Mr. Westcoat, Ms. Abdelgwan, and Mr. Boehner joined us on a lot of the deliberations. And I think we're all excited to come to you tonight and bring this to you. We've got a model that's underneath the blanket there. But I, I think it's important that we, we discuss where we've, where we've been, the discussions we've had, and what brought us to where we are tonight. And then to let council know that, or take input from the council so we can go back and have our final meeting and hopefully get this project feature going. We started back in January, around January. Had basically monthly meetings. And, bless you. Went through a lot of different concepts. You seen the first concept that we had with the water feature and all of that. I'll explain now, there is no water feature in our concepts now. And it, what we have has taken on a dramatically different look than what we've had before. So there's been a lot of discussions going on. And we have had our design consultant come back with the ideas that we gave him. They came back with their, their ideas and their concepts, and I built a model based on those concepts. Is there anything you guys?
You know, and like Kevin had mentioned, this went through a lot of different versions and changes. And the one thing that, that really remained constant was that we wanted something unique, something that would represent Raymore, and that had a, the ability for student art to be displayed. That way we can, we could bring in, you know, our students and the community within this one element. So those, those things never changed throughout all the discussions.
Yes, there were those, those premier concepts that we did always hang to. We all had our, I think, our own pet projects in it. And we, we worked through everything that we did with those, those primary purposes in, in mind. And I, I think that all of those are represented. Another thing that I'll touch on, too, is that even early on, you know, it's the element of student involvement, community involvement, community buy-in for this whole project. There was another element that we tried to, and boy, we really fought to find this one. But we tried to keep in the history of Raymore also. And we, we have come up with, with part of that, too. And, and you'll see how it ties into the farmer's market. And so anyway, is there anything you'd like to add, Sonya?
I'll just add that it was, you know, starting with our own ideas and working up a concept with that, and then working with a concept designer, and keeping this, the community piece in it. Something, you know, we know the Roundabout was a little controversial, so something that kind of brings people together there. And then the other part that you guys kind of addressed, but not really, is the art piece. And we've been talking a lot about a council, a lot as a council, about bringing some art into Raymore, and how can we organize that? And what's that going to look like? And so having this be an artistic piece was also very important to us.
We, we also even had a field trip out to our Roundabout. And our, our consultant, they actually floated balloons at various heights so that we could kind of get an idea of, you know, what it would look like from different vantage points at different levels. So there is even an element of, you know, we actually experimented during the process.
And we talked about wanting it to be something to bring attention to Raymore from, from the highway. And so we're hoping with the height, in combination with the lighting down there, that it will bring us some attention right off the highway, since we aren't right there at that exit ramp. And also, just to give us some individuality, a little bit of personality with this, to tie in with the city of Raymore.
And I think we've given a pretty good introduction to it. Now, Mike, can I have you help me uncover this here? And I'll go through some of the, the design features and talk about that. And you guys feel, feel free to jump in if I'm missing something, you know. So anyway. I told, I told the mayor, I added some of my humor into this tonight, so...
And, and you're right, it's a bit warped.
Charlene, I just might donate it to the Historical Society. She's shaking her head. Anyway, for the ones that weren't looking at the camera and may not be able to see that, that, that is one of Charlene Sunday's best. So anyway, we, we, I'll, I'll set this here up here. And I'll go through, if, Brian, would you mind to pass these out? Yeah, yeah, there's copies here. He's going to hand you out some of the, well, all the sketches that we got from our design consultant. And they have been incorporated into what you see here. These are the discussions we had with the consultant. And I've tried to replicate those, those ideas here. What you're looking at here, once you get your papers there, this is what the design consultant came up with as far as bottom dollar. Okay? Something very basic, something without a lot of the elements. You know, this one here doesn't have the, the light element.
That's, that's actually concept B. So that's not the very basic, that was the second. So that's on the second page, concept B.
Yeah, thank you. So anyway, what it is, is shown here with the pedestal. Six smaller pedestals, the knee wall, and a planter on top. Basically, if you could imagine this, it would have lighting, lighting on to this here, lighting this up. Now, I will explain the smaller pedestals also. You'll see the medallions in the center. That's where we're thinking about for the student art involvement. These would be removable and be able to have portability through the city, like down at the farmer's market, if we wanted to display these down there, too. These here would be able to be rotated out throughout the years and such like that. We've got this shown with six smaller pedestals and the knee wall around it. Another key, well, another thing that's good about what we have down there now, we do, we did budget some money. We've spent money down at the Roundabout for plantings and stuff like that. Staff is confident, all of that stuff can be reused and salvaged and incorporated into our plan. So anyway, what we have is, and I, I believe, if I'm correct, these, these smaller pedestals are like four feet tall? Is that right? They're either three or four feet tall. And then this taller pedestal, we're envisioning this here to be about nine feet. So anyway, that is option B, correct? Okay, now I'm going to go ahead and try to...
When, when the consultant showed this to us, he, and you can see in option B, they were, they're building up the center of the circle a little bit. So they're building it up two feet, which allowed for each of these to be five feet, but seven feet from the surface of the road.
Yes. And the outside diameter of the circle here that I'm pointing to is approximately 20 feet, that we're envisioning down there.
That, that keeps it inside the apron, right?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Is there anything else you'd add to this? Okay. That there would be the, the lower end option B. I'll just set this here off over here. Now, we did, like what we've spoken about earlier, you know, we feel that we want something unique and something with pizzazz and splash for the city of Raymore. And that's where the art feature comes in. And one of the things that the consultant drew up, and you'll see this here in your, what page is that on, Sonya?
It's design C, the next page.
That's what I'm trying to replicate here. With, and it's maybe easier to see there. With, what, what I envision this here as, is metal poles with the steel plating cut out. That way you've got kind of an abstract art with the light shining up through it so you can get the beacon effect at night and stuff like that. And that's, that's just one option.
And with, with this option, what, what the designer was going for is that it resembles rail. It resembles the railroad tracks. So, and you can even see within the pedestal, we can do that with stone and actually make it look like railroad tracks are actually going up to it. And using that type of, of artwork, and we could even incorporate that into other places around the city, whether that's in the farmer's market or, you know, in recreation park. We can use that type of a landmark. You know, very similar to the way Kansas City used the cows a few years ago, or Omaha, I think uses the O, is a way to, you know, basically brand Raymore, basically looking back at our roots. And it definitely plays well with the side improvements to farmer's market with the whole depot look. So that's just another concept.
And one of the other things that the designer talked to us about with this concept was that we would have several different options as far as the panels go. Some of the pictures on here show actual colored images on the panels. He said we could do something like etched metal to have the pictures on it, or like what Kevin has here, more with the actual cutouts in the metal to create that, an opportunity for the light to shine through.
The, the architect did stress that, you know, the different treatments they can do to the metal by etching it would, would blend itself to like, this is something that I didn't think of, but when you drive up to this, the headlights shining off of the, the different cuts and crevices of, of a etched metal will give this here a dazzling effect. And, you know, so keep that in mind, too. You know, that was one of those added things, you know, we've always discussed, we wanted a lighting feature, but we never thought... but we never thought of, you know, headlights actually hitting something like this too. So is there any questions? Okay, then I will go ahead and take this here down. And I have a third option, which I'm gonna require to put the microphone down, and it's gonna take me just a second.
While he does that, I'll kind of talk a little bit. There isn't actually a picture in the concept design of what you're gonna show us next.
No, there is not.
This is instead something that we kind of created taking pieces from a lot of the designs they gave us that we thought, hey, we really like this part of this one and this part of this one. So you won't find a page in the handout that will show you what Kevin's gonna show us.
Where this came from was about a month ago when we had our second meeting with the design consultant. We saw Roundabout Design D, and then also Design E. And we said, we like this and we like this. Then our consultant says, well, here, just do this. He folded a piece of paper in half and married them together, and that's what we have here. So that's kind of the thing. But you'll see that in Design D, there's a lot of metal work underneath the bottom part of the sculpture that we just saw that as distracting away from the art piece. So, you know, and that there's something else that Sonya said to me, and that I've been hearing also from people in the community, is that if it's gonna be an art piece, don't bury it underneath a kind of a crate-looking thing there. So anyway. And this is what I dropped two weeks ago and shattered in the parking lot, so hopefully I don't do that again. Okay, hopefully it's straight. And this is what we're, what we came up with as far as what you see there in Design D. But a little bit in a different way. We've raised this up on top of the pedestal. We've incorporated rails from what we see here on the side, also coming up into the spirals, the flames, whatever you wanna call this. And Mr. Wesco kinda explained this here, and, you know, and what I think is correct, you know, we've got the railroad tracks, the representation of that, coming up here into something that, you know, yes, this is where we came from. We were known for our depot here way back when, back when Charlene was running the post office. Then coming into, morphing into something more diverse, something more new, even that. And that's what, you know, I like about this concept here or this design. It, when I look at this, I see art as far as what art means to me or what I, my envision of art is too. And those are the same comments that I'm hearing from the community also, that the people that have seen this. They seen this, which they like, but they say this doesn't really say art to them that this here does.
I'll just add a couple things to that. One of the things, by taking the parts that we liked best from a few different designs, it allowed us to have the art, it allowed us to have the railroad tracks still, the history. And then it also, you notice on this Design D that started with kind of the top art piece, we didn't have the wall around the bottom, which is where we're putting the student art and incorporating the community. One of the things we talked about with the removable student art as well is that we could take those pieces and move them to different places in the city. So again, creating another opportunity for this to be the beginning of art all across the city.
Quick question, these ribbons of metal on the top of this thing, when the consultant reviewed this with you, was it their idea that it would be able to withstand the wind loadings and snow loadings and stuff like that that we might get in this area?
Yes, we did discuss that. And they said that, you know, that that could be designed into it. Another thing that we, that, you know, when I came forward to council the last time and I had the fountain and the acrylics and that, we did ask about that. And there was, he gave us, well, this is my take, that I, he had some concerns as far as the acrylics and stuff like that. He said it could be done, but this here would be more stronger and more able to withstand those elements.
He said this would, this type of a material would also withstand the vandalism aspect that could potentially happen as well, because this could be cleaned. And whereas if we deal with acrylics, you know, kids passing by and taking shots at it or what have you, it, you know, always present threat. This would actually stand the test of time better.
What material would it be? Is it gonna be stainless steel or something like that?
We have not determined that. He said that stainless steel is definitely an option. He talked about aluminum. He did give down, he said that there was some difference in prices and stuff like that. But am I right? I think he said stainless steel would be pricey, but it seems like it would be less than the aluminum? Am I correct? I can't remember.
He said that there were definitely metals that we could put different finishes on that would provide the same effect, you know, as stainless steel, but maybe at a lesser cost.
Yeah.
I got my tax statement today, so the first thing on my mind is, what's it gonna cost us?
Well, I wish I could answer that. You know, where we're at right now is what we paid for is, we paid for the consultant's concepts and if it can be done. We have not gotten too much into the cost of this and that and everything else. We instructed our consultant to come back with three options for us. And that's kind of what I'm showing here is three options. And correct me if I'm wrong, the first option, we asked for it to be around the $25,000 mark. The second option, around the $60,000 mark, 60 to 75,000 anyway. And then the third option, up to $100,000. $100,000.
Would you purchase it for half a million?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we go back to the first option with the hat?
I've got it underneath the podium.
I like what you all have done, and I recognize the work that's gone into it and everything. But that roundabout is really costing us a lot of money. When we started out, we could've had just a traffic signal for 250, but the roundabout was 500,000. And now you're talking about, I don't know how much more. We're getting up to almost three quarters of a million dollars before we're through. And can, is that really what we have in mind? To me, that seems a little excessive. But I don't know, we've got a project that we haven't finished and it's gonna cost us around 700, 800,000 dollars before we're through then, isn't it?
I don't think it's gonna approach that, that type of a price tag. I know that, I think with the elements that have been presented, it's definitely within, it's somewhere in between the first and the second tier, probably leaning more towards that second tier. But there are elements that can be taken out or put in. The first stage here was to present it to the council and get your take on it and to see if it's going in the right direction. What are your thoughts of the designs?
Well, one question, and I agree with Councilmember Hubot. They're great designs, every one of them, including the hat in the beginning, which I did get a chuckle out of. One question though, and we talked about this in an earlier discussion, is this something that could be phased? In other words, could we have, what was it, Option B? Begin with Option B and then work to, Concept B, start with Concept B, which I would think would be a lower-cost concept, and then work towards Concept D in a future year or something.
I think to answer that question would be yes. We did ask those questions of our design consultant. And he said there are elements that we could take out, you know. And like I say, I'm showing this with the knee wall. There's a reason why I made that to where it could be removed. He says that, you know, if we choose that we don't want this, we don't have to have this. Okay? But I'm showing it with it. So there is the option of taking elements out.
There were certain elements that are à la carte. So yes, it could be, you know, once the foundation is in place, as it builds up, then, you know, like the pedestal, you know, that's pretty, pretty much the same within a lot of the different designs. Working from that, then we could add the outside ring, you know, the knee wall, or whatever feature it is that we would wanna add.
Well, it would seem to me that the knee wall and stuff like that, we're not talking a dramatic decrease in cost if those are removed.
You'd be surprised.
Is that right? Are they concrete?
You know, we've discussed different types of materials. It could be concrete, it could be stone work, it could be brick work. We haven't, you know, that's all part of, what we determined what we want.
So what you're looking from council this evening is a general consensus of, yeah, this is the right direction, continue on and get better data, dollar data and that sort of thing is what you're looking for? Counsel?
I don't know, I personally like the Option B the best. It's attractive and just a little more traditional. It's my personal favorite.
I like, I like this one, I like Option D. I think this is important. It may be a little bit of an expense, but you've heard me talk before, I really believe that we are moving into the next huge growth phase of the city. And I think this is going to be a signature piece of the city. I think it's gonna be something that we see. I think it's gonna be something that draws people's attention here. And it's gonna be things that you see in photographs as we go forward and we build the community center and we develop further. I, great work, I like this one.
I'd also point out that this roundabout is visible from 49 Highway. It's also visible as you leave a portion of Felton on the east side of 49 coming into Raymore, so it is an introduction piece. I really wanna commend the design that's currently up there. I like the idea of the artistic structure underneath while it becomes more artistically free-flowing toward the top. So I clicked with at least the efforts of the committee that put this together. And I think that's, now, you know, again, we're always gonna get to cost, but I think we had to get to concept first, and I think there was a home run on the concept.
And that was the reason why, that's the reason why we actually floated the balloons. The height of this one, and I think it's at 30 feet.
25 to 30.
25 to 30. Can actually be seen from I-49. So it does attract attention. And at the same time, you know, serve as that, kind of that entry, entryway into that section of the city which eventually will develop further.
That is an option, that is an element that we've discussed thoroughly. And that's what I'm showing here. And that was, that's my intent of it, is to have it there for aesthetic reasons at night in all four seasons. That's why the water feature went away.
And that's why certain metals, we went with those to make sure that they attract the light and reflect it as well.
You would probably be able to see this from yours. I can almost, if this was built, I would probably be able to see the top two foot from my house on Stacy.
One of the other things that we considered when we were actually out there was the size of the trees and the other things on properties around there. So we didn't, looking at it, we didn't want it to be too tall, we didn't want it to be too wide. And we heard from a lot of people, they wanted something you could kind of see through. They didn't want something big and bulky in the middle of that. And so we, I really feel like this achieves all of the goals that we set forth.
And we did discuss that extensively. I mean, you know, and this is one thing that's great about this committee. I mean, we, we had our disagreements inside that back room there a couple of times. But we've come up with something that, you know, is compromising in all ways. And we all firmly believe that this here would serve to fit the concerns of the community, the things that I've heard of the folks that are gonna be driving through this every day. You know, they told me, Kevin, we wanna be able to see through it. They want opacency. So that's what we tried to do, you know. With the feature, being able to see through it, to be able to see around it, we are not going to have 15-foot rose bushes like what we see down here on 58, clear out here to the side of the thing. That's what the people don't like. So, you know, this is what we've come up with. And the architect consultant saw exactly what we were talking about when we told him about that.
So which brings us back to the next question is, what, where price range does the council feel comfortable with this type of a project? Now, you know, I said half a million, I was joking. I was trying to make, you know, lighten the mood just a little bit. But where does the council see or feel, where's their comfort level?
I think we had a couple of statements over there. I don't know whose hand went up. Jay, you first, and then Jeff.
Just looking at some of those pillars on the, around there, ought to be fairly substantial so that somebody doesn't plow it over in the wintertime.
You know, that is something that could be dealt with. There are rocks inside of the apron, you know, and that's what we did look at while we were down there on our tour and watching and making, getting a visual of the balloons and looking at the whole layout. This fits within the worst tire tracks that we saw down there. And some of those tire tracks, you know, I've heard the stories that, you know, a semi can drive through it and will never touch those rocks. Well, it's evident that it does. But we did look at it to see where those worst tire tracks were at, and they fell without, outside of the perimeter of what we're talking about here. We had the architect look at that also.
The smaller pillars, you've got the small squares, and that was intended to have like some type of, like art featured, and you gave some different options. One recommendation or suggestion I would make, and I like that, that's a fine idea, just to, and it's fairly inexpensive, to kind of defeat the vandalism thing. Because vandals are, they love to draw pictures of mustaches on people or things. 3M makes a coating, an adhesive coating you put over it, it's clear vinyl. I get it on some of our trespassing signs. The spray paint will still go on, but it's very easy to clean off once you apply that. And, you know, when we add it to the cost of a sign, it's like an extra 15, 20 bucks. I mean, you could add this for little of no cost and probably make the chief breathe a little bit easier sigh of relief, I'd say.
The idea of the student art, you, you may remember this, you may not, but it was a reverse casting mold that rose to the top when we had our art teacher come in and offered to do this with the students. And she gave us some examples of things she did. But I'm sure that there's some kind of a coating that could go over that also that would serve the same purpose. But, you know, not to say that the reverse casting molding is the say-all and do-all. You know, art is art, you know. There is no one art, as far as I'm concerned, you know. I mean, this is, and we're talking about, you know, what our discussions were was to fill these up year by year and then rotate them out. So art changes over time, you know.
Charlene, I'll give you the floor in just a second. A question for Jim. How much money do we have left over on this project? Round figure, 25?
Between 20 and 25, I think.
Okay. Councilmember Hubot?
I was gonna say, I think that if we're, the council, it's agreed they're in the right direction. We'd just like to have some cost factors now so that, and I think we all kind of like the one that has the aluminum and all of the things that was with the D. We like this. So I'd say go ahead and go forward and let us know what the costs are so we can make a decision.
Well, and Councilmember Wesco did ask the council what kind of money were they thinking about spending? And I'll start with 25,000 is what we got.
I really don't wanna give an opinion on cost tonight, only because I was glad, I just, I wanted to get an idea of the concept. In addition, I think now that we have a general direction of concept, now's when you would go back and look at cost and say, okay, what metals would be better based on, we had heard about weather, about, you know, vandalism. You know, I know that the cost could vary dramatically now, just trying to figure out materials. So I would, you know, I guess I would just give a general non-dollar amount encouragement for the committee, 'cause I assume that's your next step.
for the committee, because I assume that's your next step.
I think it's...
And we're, we're, I'm open-ended on that, I, I don't want to...
I think it's, I mean, if, if we're starting at 20,000, I think we probably should let you guys know the amounts that were originally given to us by the consultant. Do you guys agree?
For, for 25, it's this design.
25,000 gets us your front page.
Right.
The second one with the planner on top was 50 to 60,000. The one, this one, take away the wall around the outside, was 80 to 100,000. The cost that he gave us for the final, this, this design that put all the elements together that we liked, was 90 to 105. Concept C was 80 to 100, depending on what we put on the metal panels, and that doesn't have, that doesn't have the wall around the bottom. That's...
I'm sorry, and Concept B was?
Concept D is 90 to 105.
B, Baker.
B, 50 to 60.
And the various elements is what add, you know, like the knee wall, you know, if you want to take that out, I believe that, that particular element wasn't that 30,000 to add the knee wall. I, I forget, you know, there were certain elements that were added into various designs, but this is kind of an amalgamation of, of several different ones. And was there a per-unit cost, or?
I have a rough estimate, and preliminary rough estimate, let me pull up my iPad here. You got it here?
Yeah. Basically, the knee walls are about 15,000. The metal art columns could be between 15 and 20,000, depending on if we had four columns or six columns. The metal structure, meaning this metal structure, was roughly 30 to 40,000, and the main column that it sits on is 30,000.
That's a lot of money. When we started with a welcoming feature that was going to be between 20 and 25,000, and now we're up to 105, for something that we all agree looks great, but that's a lot of money.
You know, I'm still on the, I want to process this, to be honest with you, with all that we had at the civic center conversation, you know, but I will, I, I will say the problem I, I have, from a fiscal standpoint here is, you know, typically the rationale is you don't look at, at price when you look at art, you know, but at the same time, that's 105,000 dollars pill is a hard one to swallow, and so, I just, I've got a lot of thoughts going on, I, I really don't want to, I don't want to get too deep into it tonight for myself.
Councilmember Stevens?
How much was the cast stone planter? Did you have a breakout on that?
We don't have a breakout for Concept B. Concept B as a whole was 50 to 60,000.
I just wondered, because they, they sell these over at Martin City for about 700 dollars.
And one of the things that we talked about with this is, we don't want to, we don't want to put something there that anybody can buy off the shelf. We want this to be unique to Raymore, we want it to be something that we can have, that nobody else can buy and put in their front yard. You know, I think, I think that's important, if we want this piece to be a symbol of our city. And just a thought that I, that's going through my mind, Pete mentioned phasing, phasing it in, I would be a little hesitant, not that I'm saying that's not a good idea, but a little hesitant, because sometimes when you do things like that, it ends up costing more in the long run. It costs more to get the same guy out here five times to do five different parts than it would do just to sit down and get it all done at once.
I think we've had so much thrown at us tonight, what was the community civic thing, and with this, we just need to rest our brains a little bit and come back and do some more. If we have to go into executive session for anything Monday night, fine, if we don't, fine, but we just got to decide, and I'm like Mr. Morehead here, I need to be able to think and get my head around it, because some of those things, you had green reed there, well, that's going to have to be maintained, so do I want that, or do I want something that doesn't have any green reed on? Those are some little, small items that I have to think about. But as far as your, all five of those, yes, I think we could live with any one of the five, it's just that we want to pick the one that's best, because we might want to duplicate it in a smaller way. So, could we come back and have another meeting on this? Is there a deadline on that?
No, we certainly...
And, and again, this, this committee serves at, at the council's pleasure. You know, you, you, or the mayor created this to just get the ideas and get the direction. And again, you know, this is kind of what we've come to, to this point in the process, and we're happy to take it and, and go whichever direction the council wants to go in. This was just a way to bring ideas, because the one thing that we kept hearing was, we don't want a tombstone, or we don't want a headstone. So, again, that's, that's kind of the direction that, the only direction that we were given. You know, some of our initial designs, we had totem poles, you know, to display art, and so it kind of evolved from that to, to other things, and, and to the fountain, and then into this. So, again, you know...
And I'll, I'll commend the committee for putting together this, especially the, the model, and, and the very, very first model with the Charlene Hubach, or Councilmember Hubach hat on it, was, was fantastic, and I really do think we need to get a pricing on that before we move on. But I commend the committee for all the work that we've done, and that you've done, and the rest of the council now is going to have to think about where, where do we want to go from there, so. And with that, unless we have reason for other discussion, let's adjourn.
of an acquisition of a piece property. My feeling is, I'm willing to go into executive session, one, to hear it out, I mean, she's related to me, and I understand it, but the other thing is, we haven't, we're kind of hitting a slower part of the season, so if we are getting out of the meeting fairly early, I know it would take very long, I'm supportive of going.
The what?
Is the property for sale?
Yes.
And do we have the money?
Yes.
So, I'm just saying, I'm willing to support you if that's what you want.
Yes, what it is, we need to be able to discuss it without having to discuss it in public session, we'll let them sell it.
Is it a specific piece of property?
Yes.
I wanted by Joe, and then let you know.
Will you notify Mr. Fearborn then that we're going to do that?
Well, yeah.
Oh, it's money, but no object, the things that we could do.